This conference will now be recorded.
Excuse me. All right then. Okay, 4A was yoga classes and they are available Tuesdays and Thursdays 6 to 7 and Wednesdays 10 to 11 a.m. Very good. Before I go to my address, Councilman Ricketts would like to acknowledge a recent event that has made national news.
I just wanted to say thank you to the citizens that may have been at the Walmart and thank you for the patriotism and everything for this last week that we made national news of people singing the Star Spangled Banner and the whole store stopping and singing it together. So it's just a shout out to our citizens. Thank you.
Very good. I'll make a habit is this will be the second address I've made, but at the first meeting of each month, I'll have an address. But good evening council and ladies and gentlemen of Hazlet. Each year during this time, I reflect on the relevance of celebrating Independence Day and I want to share those reflections of this year. First of mine is the song, "God Bless America." Of course, you know, "God Bless America" is an American patriotic song written by Irvin Berlin during World War I in 1918. And revised by him in the run up to World War II in 1938. The opening stanza states, "God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with a light from above." It's clear that we as a nation have and do place great confidence in God for our leading. We are the benefactors of this confidence, which brings me to, brings to mind Psalm 33:12. Blessed is the nation whose God is Lord. Our nation, state and city have been blessed. Our nation has been referred to as a gift often called miraculous. Valued gifts such as this require us to stand up at times and claim it, to make a statement as to how special the gift is and that we will defend and maintain it to the best of our ability. This brings me to the Declaration of Independence, the second paragraph. "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness. That to secure these gifts governments are instituted among men deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. That whenever any form of government becomes destructive to these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or abolish it. And to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness." I make it a point to read the Declaration of Independence each Fourth of July to remind myself of the purpose of this national celebration. The Declaration cites 27 grievances against King George III ranging from no representation, no justice and ruling by tyranny. The Declaration of Independence was a declaration of self-governance, governance to pursue life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness. The principle, the principles of self-governance have evolved to all levels of government in our great nation to include our local government in Hazlet, Texas. I encourage us all to read the Declaration of Independence and reflect on the ideas that were declared to the world. These that lay the foundation for the greatest nation on earth, the United States of America. Thank you and happy Independence Day. Item 5, staff reports. Update activities, projects and events and recaps. 5A, City of Hazlet earns a distinguished budget presentation award for the sixth year. Jim, do you want to take that?
Actually, every year there's certain criteria that's used by the Governor Finance Officer Association to rate a budget. And we, for the sixth year in a row, Marcy did all the work on the budget and it was just distinguished presentation budget or distinguished budget presentation award, which is the highest honor and recognition governmental accounting can receive. And I'd like just to thank Marcy for all of her work and it's been outstanding since she's been here. And obviously it's for the sixth time in a row, so I'm very, we're very proud of Marcy and the budget award.
Good job, Marcy. 5B, update on city secretary position, Jim?
Yes, sir. We did hire an interim city secretary, Kathleen Rice. Job description's been developed, it's under review at this present moment. Once we get the job description through the approval process, we're going to... We are going to... The Texas Municipal Corks Association's going to be advertised, the TML Career Center website's going to be advertised. And the North Texas chapter will be advertised also in a wide distribution. All applications will be submitted through the city website and collected and then they will be reviewed. We're looking at, once the job description is approved, we're looking at maybe 45 to 60 days at the earliest. Probably 90 days is probably the most we can do through the, through the interview process, selection interview process. So maybe October, November before something's for council to approve. So Mayor Halsey has given very good guidance regarding the requirements of C Sec position through the local government code. Those requirements are going to be listed in job description and advertised. So if you have anything more to add, Mayor Halsey, I appreciate it.
Oh, very good. That's a great recap. 5C.
So is the council going to get a look at the job description?
Sure, we'll pass that on to you on our next update till we have it finished. Very good.
I had a question as well. Is, we had talked, I think Councilmember Rob had brought it up about doing a subcommittee with council members when we get to the point of hiring. Is that still something that we're considering doing after we get, I think you said three applications that, another criteria?
No, to be following the local government code and I'm sure y'all have read those sections so far. The process is if there's a vacancy in one of those positions, the mayor appoints. So we will utilize the staff, myself, Jim and Marcy and others to interview the candidate and have a candidate for your, present to the council.
Well, it also says, yeah, the council has to approve.
Yes.
And I personally want to approve any one person. I want to see a slate of candidates and interview at least three.
That's your prerogative. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I actually agree with Councilmember Rob on that.
Oh, very good. It's your prerogative not to approve. 5C, update city engineer position. Again, Jim?
Right. For this evening's meeting, we're going to consider appointing Belchaff and Associates interim city engineer for an indefinite period of time. There are pressing needs we have. The one before that sweet grass, the civil engineering has to be done so the final plaque can be approved at the next P and Z meetings agenda and then forwarded to council. We're going to proceed making assignments to Belchaff and Associates for indefinite period.
Item 5D, update on planning development director position.
Yes, sir. We have a job advertisement prepared. It's also, it's, sorry to see Wes go, he's done a great job for the time he's been here. We are going to advertise the position on the American Planning Association of Texas chapter. The TML website regarding planning position and SGR, which is a local, well, it's a nationwide firm, but they do a lot of work in Texas, will be on their website also. The job description's been already ready. We're going to probably advertise the position next Monday and collect applications through the city website, which they'll be collected and then reviewed and qualified applicants will be interviewed.
Thank you, Jim. Last is update on our, is 5E, update on our permit tech position?
Yes, sir. We have received four applications for the position. We weren't overwhelmed, but I think we do have some candidates to interview. In the interim, we are going to try to use a temporary service to do some data input for us. You cannot believe how many permit applications we are receiving. Mike is busy inspecting multiple structures a day. So therefore we need someone to input data regarding street addresses, permit applications, fees and everything like that. But we do have four applications that we would like to interview at least three of them and see if we can't get through this process and get someone on board. Extremely busy up there. Jerry DeVries was outstanding at that job and we hated losing, but he advanced to a C manager position and a manager analyst position in the C manager's office. So good luck to him, he recently got his MPA. So that's where I'm at on that position.
Very good. Item 6, consent agenda. We have one item on here, 6A, approve regular city council meeting minutes of June 21st, 2021.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Motion is made to approve the consent agenda, is there a second? There's a motion and a second. We will not be doing a roll call vote since we do visually see everybody. And so, all in favor? Five. No opposed, motion passes. Item 7, amendments to the 2021 adopted budget totaling $413,929. Don't pass out, please. A big number, but financially we're well off and that we can handle something like this. But these are all needs that are pressing, I'll say. 7A, discuss, consider and act on a request to amend the 2021 budget to allow for the purchase of capital items for the Public Works Department in the amount of $152,000. Mr. Rogers?
Come on there, Stephen. Sound right? All right. Mayor and council, yeah, we brought this to the mayor's attention. We've been having a lot of problems especially with our mowing this year. Our mowers currently, our zero turns are 2008 model, a 2014 model. And right now what's happening to us is we spend more time working on them than they do run. So we're spending a lot of downtime waiting parts sometimes for a couple of weeks at a time, which is causing us to get behind, we cannot keep up. Getting all the mowing done a week at a time. We also have our skid steer which runs for about 30 minutes at a time before it starts overheating and giving us problems. And it's a 2007 model, already 14 years old. And that's something that we use for a number of, it's for street repair work, work around dirt work. We use it for unloading trucks, for fork, brooms on it for brooming off side blocks. So I mean, it does, it has a lot of things it can do, but currently it's the same thing. You get to use it for a little bit of time and then forget it, it runs for a week. Then we have our rotary bat wing, which also breaks down almost every time pretty much we use it. That's $19.91, sitting there almost as long as I have. So it's getting on up there in age and it's just killing us on time. This is the biggest problem we have with things. Every time we go to use them, something breaks down, down for a few hours or maybe down for another week or two and that cuts down to, we only have two mowers at one time trying to keep them running. And there have been times here recently when we barely able to keep one from trying to mow the park and stuff. That's just, that's just not getting fixed.
I'm sorry. Once I mastered the remote control, not doing a good job on this one. These are essential tools that public work needs. They need them, they needed them probably a couple of years ago. But we would rather have our public works out performing their job. They would prefer that than trying to fix old equipment and parts are hard to get rid of. So I would urge you to please consider this.
I have a question. How often should you be replacing this equipment? I mean, is it normal for 10 years?
Normally, what we used to try to do all the time is like a zero turn mower. They are usually good for about 1,200 hours, more to 200 hours than anything else. We would like to, you know, five hours, 1,200 hours, whatever kind of hit. Kind of always the same. Right now they're running for, they're 14 years old or seven years old now for some of them. So they're just getting way too long. Even the dealerships tell you, you know, once a mower hits 1,600 hours, which ours are, that's pretty much it. That's about the life of a mower on a zero turn mower in the way of a week. Someone who, you know, uses them for their yard or something might get 2,000. But hard as ours have to mow, because they generally are mowing somewhere in the neighborhood of 60 each week. So they're, they're pretty much on the go from Monday through Friday doing nothing, mowing, mowing, mowing.
Just another question, is there a log on the hours of each of these machines just so we can keep up in the futures when they start to get to their?
We do. We logged hours on, we check hours when we change oil and filters and every year at the end of the year they get their put away service to keep them held over, over the winter so that they come out of mothballs. So we always keep up the hours.
One of the things we discussed, Marcy and I discussed this today as a matter of fact, we do have a list of all our capital assets. And with that, we can keep log hours and have a programmed replacement so this doesn't catch us off guard. And like it does now, you know, we're waiting till they break down and you spend more time repairing than actually working.
Yeah, that was going to be my point, that maybe keep these logs so we know and just anticipate that it's coming. So that'd be a good idea. And the last question, is there any value in selling the used ones?
We always do. We always bundle everything we have like that together and try to sell them off in an auction. And normally, we've had some things in the past that went for way more than we ever thought, way more than we could have traded.
I'd like to ask a question. So were any of these items on the list for public works needs when we discussed the budget last summer?
Yeah.
Which ones?
Zero turns, they've been on there for at least the last couple of years. From our side, I can't tell you what y'all saw, I'm telling them what I turned in was up.
So Jim, is there room in the budget for any of this?
Well, there's ample funds to fund, to fund this budget amendment. I don't know exactly what the fund balance is, but it's sufficient to cover that amount of money, $150,000. In fact, it's sufficient to cover 7A and 7B.
Marcy could address this well.
Currently, yes, there is sufficient funds in the general fund, which would be the fund that the money would come from, generated from this year's excess revenues over what we thought.
What is that balance? What is that excess revenue?
The excess revenues are, in the calculations I've done in preparation for the budget this year, about 2.2 million that we've generated in excess of what we, where we thought we'd end up. And the fund balance is projected at the end of the year to be $5,732,000.
So we're, we're good financially. We're in, we're in good position.
I want to start off by saying that I obviously am for this, but I just was wondering why A, B and C are all, well, I understand kind of B, but while they're coming to us right before we start our budget process next week, is this something that can't wait a week or is it just, I was just curious about that?
We start our budget process, then approval for actual expenditure wouldn't come until after November the 2nd.
Right, and next week's when we start the process. So that's, I was just wondering if it was something?
No, this isn't immediate need. It isn't, all these are immediate items?
Okay, my second question was on the boom mower, you decided rental was a better option?
Yeah, we did, something we used it a lot, but I mean, this is a very expensive machine and even, I mean, we never owned a new one, but a new one would probably last 25, 30 years. It's going to die from sun exposure long before it's going to wear out. Because it just doesn't have, we don't have enough to. Plus, what it's used for is along the right of ways, Old County roads we've been in, which as anybody knows, those are fast disappearing. So our hope is, you know, within five, 10 years, we're probably not going to need it. We're thinking renting one would be a whole lot cheaper long term for us since we use it about a week, two at a time. That's it. Once plus season, we're done.
So my question is, can the, can the skid steer loader be rented possibly or is that something you just use a lot more?
We use that. If it's running, it would be pretty much almost every day.
Okay.
It's something that we use a lot. We're doing a lot of different.
I do have one question. You talked about disposing, taking these to auction. They don't make equipment like they used to make and you probably know that too. So even this new stuff that you're probably getting, it may be coming, going down also. Is there room to store, or at least for a time being, as things worked, to make sure that you're continued, continue to be up and working?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. That's one of the reasons we have three zero turns now. We kept, last time we bought, we kept the best one of the ones we had, kept it around, kept it going and so we had a back. Now the backup's gone about the same time as often as the other ones go. We just take them all going at the same time.
Would council like to go ahead and discuss these other items? And well, let's go ahead. We're on this, it's a discuss, consider and act on each one of these items.
That is where I was actually about to ask a question because the 413 is kind of, whoa, almost half a million. But 7B, that technically comes out of, it says transportation tax, but I think they meant street maintenance. So that actually technically won't come out of the general fund, is that correct?
It's the council's pleasure on that. The current project for the Hazlet streets was budgeted from the transportation sales tax fund. And there is, there will be sufficient funds to make this budget amendment from there. However, since it wasn't part of the original project, if you decided you wanted to fund it from the general fund, there are funds available there also.
All right, item 7A, is there any more discussion on that? If we, is there a motion?
Mayor Halsey, I move to accept and it's the request to amend the budget to allow for the purchase of the capital items for the Public Works Department in the amount of $152,000.
The motion is made to approve 7A request, is there a second?
I second that.
There is a second, any more discussion?
Yeah, so would that include the rental of the, of the bat wing motor?
It would include the rental of the, it's not, we're buying a bat wing. It is the rent.
Bat wing would be a purchase.
Okay.
What is the rental?
Oh, it's the boom one, it's the boom one, okay.
Boom mower, yeah.
So purchase four items and rent one, is that what we're talking about?
Rental one would come out of our normal standard street maintenance budget anyway. We have funds in there to rent equipment for use on the road projects anyway.
So this provides for four weeks of rental. There's a lot of catch up work to be done.
Okay, so then that, I don't think that amount is correct then. Okay, I don't teach math. So it would be 16, no, 32,000, so maybe it is. So 32,000 for the two 16,000 zero turn mowers, plus 85, plus 23. Do you know what that is? Usually there's a calculator right here. Oh, you have the calculator. I'm just going to hear it, do you want me to tell you? Up two. It looked like the boom, the boom mower rentals were included in that, but you're saying that that can be pulled out?
It can be done either way.
Well, we do have the boom mower rental included in this, 152. To answer your question.
Yeah, we can do it both. Depending on, except that way, just in case we grab these numbers as fast as we could. You know, this is anticipated, that's what it's going to be. They go up or down, we don't know, we're hoping.
Now, I'll say this, is that David made a statement, they could take it out of street maintenance. David has a lot of projects in street maintenance that he needs to probably spend that money on. And that's why we're actually requesting that that money be included in this 152,000 for the rental of that boom.
So that'll need to be carried over into next, the next budget as well? So don't forget.
The boom rental.
We will include that in our, we have a rental line item for equipment.
So right now, the first year, so that 12,000 for the rental, we're, we're talking about doing that as part of pulling out of the general fund reserve. But going forward, it would be part of the, the street maintenance? Okay, thank you.
If there's no other questions or discussion, I'll call for the vote. Item 7A, there has been motions and seconded. All in favor? 5, 4, 0 against, motion passes.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, David. Will that make everybody excited? I'm sure it will. Thank you. 7B, consider, discuss, consider and act on proposed change orders number two and three. Seven B, consider, discuss, consider an act on proposed change orders number two and three to DDM Construction Corporation. And a budget amendment to the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one budget for the Hasslet Park Streets project. Mr. Rogers, again, you?
Yeah, I don't know how many people are really informed on the Hasslet Park Street project, though, we got one person I'm sure is very well aware of. Uh, but this project, since it's day one nearly, it's had a major complaint about putting back the material that came off the road along the edges. Two to three feet, uh, mostly the chewed up asphalt gravel from the road. And our biggest complaint from almost vast majority of the people in the neighborhood is, that's what's gonna stay there, they're gonna rake it all back up into the road and leave for us to take out, does not have. So, we went to the contractors, we've mentioned this a number of times, that this is something that needs to be done before we get towards the end, uh, hadn't been taken care of until now. Uh, but it's something that people in the neighborhood, this has been ongoing since almost day one. They wanted topsoil, because they can get grass growth, they're all about grass, that's why they're promoting, called rock gravel pieces, asphalt pieces in their front yard.
I would like to make a comment, and I can attest to people's complaints in that, when they rebuilt one fifty-six, I don't know how long ago, fifteen years ago. They dressed out the sides with the same material. And I will tell you, uh, one, when you drive a mower on it being a grade like that, it tears up, it falls apart, it doesn't hold together. And the other is, when you try to use a weed eater, it's, uh, I look like I've been shot with double lot buck every time I come back. It is, is nasty stuff, and it's dangerous. Uh, so, um, that's the long and short of that, so it would be replaced with topsoil and graded out nicely, and very good. Uh, we do have a, um, speaker who's requested, that's, uh, Lisa McLeod. Address is thirteen thirteen Shriver, Hasslet, Texas, seven six zero five two, Lisa, are you online?
I am, and the address is three one three. Um, yes, and I'm probably one of the biggest complainers about this, um, and just know that last year, and I'm not a young woman anymore. Um, I went out and from the previous road construction, I dug up all the rock that kept surfacing, because I couldn't get anything to grow by the grass. Or by the street, and I dug up all the rock that appeared, I laid, I don't know, sixty, eighty bags of soil, I seeded, I watered, I finally had some grass growing there. So, right now, we have rock, asphalt, and concrete, you can't even put a shovel in it, it is so hard. It is my understanding that the current contract has dollars to, um, to seed. Personally, that's gonna be a waste of dollars, because nothing will grow on this, it is rock solid, because it is rock, asphalt, and concrete. And it is just molded together, and you can't even shovel it. Um, we're a neighborhood, we're not commercial, so what you have left us is an eyesore that, I mean, it's horrible, I mean, I've seen it on Schoolhouse Road, I've seen it on one fifty-six, we are a neighborhood. We have manicured and well-kept yards. Um, and so, you've taken, you've taken our grass and dirt, and you've put back this junk. Um, it is, as, uh, Mayor Halsey has said, it is a danger to passing cars, people, and pets. The lawn mower spit it out, the weed eaters send it flying, um, plus, uh, the cost to replace, um, weed eater line, to replace, um, mower blades. I know my neighbor mows fifteen yards in our subdivision, and he has a zero-turn mower, and there's like three blades on there, and every time he has to replace them, it's, I wanna say, now, don't quote me on it, like a hundred dollars to replace. Uh, or he's gonna have to, um, sharpen them all the time. And the grading out here is awful, if you haven't driven by, and if you don't live in Hasslet Park, or if you don't live past the two hundred block, then you really need to come down. It is almost terraced, and, um, so that it kind of comes out and down and out. So, if you try to mow east-west, you'll probably turn your mower over. If you try to go north-south, it's kind of a, a very high, steep hill, so to speak, because the grading is awful, it's not, it's not a smooth slope. Um, and then, I know that they had, the company had torn up my sidewalk with the, um, vibrating roller. Now, they have fixed the sidewalk, but it even then had to be done, because they put too small a drainage hole in it. And so, when they came and they chipped it out to make it bigger, I still have bits and pieces in my, you know, in my yard. I have rocks in my yard right next to the street, you know, that are probably a good five to six inches in size. This is just not, I mean, guys, this is Hasslet Park, I know we're not the new fancy subdivision, and we don't have the big fancy houses. But we have been good citizens for a long time, and what you have taken from us and left with an eyesore, we deserve better than being looked at like, you know, we're just junk over here. I mean, so many of us really work at our yards.
Ms. McLeod, um, I think we all understand, um, this was, uh, an unfortunate, um, product to have dressed out the streets with. Um, I'll say that, uh, it was, um, a, uh, cost-cutting measure that probably should not have been taken, in fact, I know it shouldn't have been taken. Because this ends up being one of these pay me now or pay me later deals. Uh, it is not a good material, and it's a dangerous material to use in that kind of a setting. Uh, do you have any more comments, um, otherwise, I'll take it to the council here.
Ju- just one more little one, and that is, that, you know, when they did the one hundred blocks of the three streets, they did that same thing with the chewed up asphalt. And some people have stuff growing, but it's not really their grass, it's just junk. And two, a lot of them don't have, you know, they still have patches of, um, rock and pebble, and, and I know one of the current council people who lives up there, I've seen rock in her yard too, so. It's, and that was what, three, over three years ago, and still nothing's growing, and you still have rock there, and I know the people in the one hundred block of Shriver, I've talked to them, I've got good friends up there. And they complain like crazy about the mowing and the weeding, weed eating, and the danger, and having grandkids there, and not being able to do anything when they're out, because the rocks are flying. It's just, it's not gonna get any better, I mean, over time, it's just not gonna get any better.
Well, we appreciate it, Ms. McLeod, um, again, if, uh, if that's, uh, if there's anything else to say, please say it, and I will, uh, otherwise, I'd like to take this to the council now.
I'm finished, thank you for your time, uh, mayor, council members, I appreciate you listening.
Thank you, Ms. McLeod.
Mayor Halsey, I just have one question, and I don't know, being new, don't have the privy of the information, and maybe this is back to you, Mr. Rogers. Uh, the aspect of the proposal in the first place, you know, again, I heard Lisa, or Ms. McLeod, say that something, there's seeding in there. What was included in the RFP for this, is this truly a change order, or is this something that is?
This is a change order, in the original specifications, it was to put back this material. Some of it's treated base material that's milled up out of the road, back on the edge of the road, packaged.
And can you explain why that is important in our neighborhood, even, yeah?
Part of it is, is the cost of hell holds the road somewhat, since it doesn't move as much, doesn't want to slide off as much as some soils would, it's all about compact.
About to prevent rutting for, for the trash pickup and mail.
Well, see, that's a different issue, and most of the people down there have, you know, I've had some of them come and ask me, they would like to have some more of this material right there where the mail truck comes off, or where the trash truck comes off. It's the rest of the yard, big problem, that part of the yard, they usually kind of end to anyway around the mailbox. But that area, these yards are all probably two hundred and, two hundred and fifty, three hundred feet across, that, that's a ten, twelve, that's, the rest of it, still the same, that's part of it.
So, with the cost of this, then, cover that, the work that was previously done in the one hundred block?
No, this is only to cover those just the ones out there on this part.
So, it would take care of the two hundred block, three hundred block, and both side roads, Sharon and James?
Mm-hmm.
Um, the citizen, the neighbors I talked to, majorly, over a majority wanted the, the topsoil, they were all for the topsoil. The few that did not mentioned the same thing you said, structurally, um, what's gonna prevent rutting, um, and then, the question I have, if we do replace it with a three-inch, that's, that's a good amount. Will the, the treated cement base still be below it, they'll just, they'll take off the three inches and put that back on top?
One of the things they have in here, it doesn't look like there, and the way he's proposed, that there's not gonna really be any.
They're all, it'll come out, and it'll all be topsoil.
Hmm, compacted topsoil. They'll probably, what they'll actually do, they'll bring in a clay-like layer, and then they'll pack that in, and then they'll come back, put the next layer, get a little nicer, pump that, pack that.
And then?
Get it back, basically like the soil, like, yeah, like, layer.
And then homeowners will be, it'll be our prerogative to seed, to water, that's not a thing that the city is going to?
Yeah, that is not included in this, that would be an additional cost, we wanted to look into doing that, we can. And then, there's always possibilities, we might could work that into the, we were, the numbers are pretty high, we anticipate, but we won't know until we start with it. Work with these guys, yeah.
Well, with regard to seeding, uh, we talked very briefly about it, um, just as the ballpark, what are you hearing?
Probably in the fifty thousand dollar range.
But that's a s- to seed all of Hasslet Park?
That would be seeding, that would be, while they're at it, I mean, those extra areas of hydro mulch, we'd be net.
Does that in?
Exclusive of them coming in, that's watering it, uh, regular basis, still, we get at least seventy-five.
The, uh, council, if that's something, if you're, uh, if you're leaning to be in favor of this for, uh, Hasslet Park. And, uh, seeding, I wish we added already in here, but nonetheless, you could certainly add some additional funds to this, uh, to take care of that.
You're saying seeding is in this quote?
It is not.
Oh, it's not, okay, it's not.
That was something we happened to negotiate with.
And I have a question, so, I know it was mentioned that seeding was included in our original contract, no?
Not that I can find.
Oh, okay.
I pulled the specs out, I couldn't find anything. I thought it was supposed to.
What about any homeowners that, kind of like when we did Brentwood Estates, and they wanted to opt out of, I don't want a new culvert? What if a homeowner, because I did, I did talk to a few that said no?
There are a few people that probably, and that's, that's what we're thinking, there will be some, because there will be somebody that's not gonna want, they're not gonna want.
Yeah, you don't have a.
They're gonna be in the minority, but there will be a few that will say, no, I like it, I want to keep it just like.
How do, how we handle that, or what?
On a, somebody comes to us and says, hey, I have a stop right there, and I don't want it, but the time is up, I'm not gonna argue with them, that's their yard.
What I'd suggest is that we, uh, we send out a notification to the residents of, uh, Hasslet Park, should this pass, is that we send out a notification.
Yeah, we would want, we would contact all those people in that area, find out what their desires are. Because you're also gonna have the guy that he wants part of it, but he doesn't want all of it, and you're gonna have the one that he wants the whole thing, there's gonna be a lot of different things, which is a pain, but it's not that bad.
It really isn't, you wouldn't say all or nothing, and that's, you just, okay.
Really not that complex. Hey, it's not gonna be that hard for them to come in, take it, somebody just, this house, they're gonna keep it, they'll stop right there and move down to the next.
Because the mailbox is, is a. A mailbox is a good point, because a lot of our mailboxes are so far off, that, um, you have to go into the yards.
Most of the people who especially have them set farther off the road, they're the first ones who say, oh, no, 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 I don't want to lose that, but rest of it's fine, but not right there.
I have a question, wh- what was this like before they did the, the construction on the road, was it, was it all sod-based?
All this, uh, it would have been all, mostly grass all the way up to the road, mostly, there's a few that didn't, but for the majority, yeah, grass all the way to the edge, like.
And I will say, as someone who, pardon to interrupt, but as someone who literally sprained her ankle walking on the streets because of the, the, the huge holes, I mean, the roads are incredible, they are so nice. So, this is one little small thing that we can fix, but it's, it's night and day with the roads.
And, and you said the reason they laid this base down was because of, to avoid the erosion, so if you put sod back in there, is that gonna do anything to the road?
It's compact, I mean, that's what was there before, grass and dirt, so.
So, the reason wasn't to keep it from eroding, it was just a cost basis?
It will, the harder material, so yeah, it stays a little better, but if you, grass growing over something, grass.
Well, counsel, I would, uh, in light of, uh, what Mr. Rogers told us about the seeding, if you were to entertain this, is consider adding sixty thousand dollars to this for seeding.
I'd like, I, here's, here's what I think, is to approve it as is, and maybe with the cost of people that don't want the transition, might have that money available for the seeding.
Wouldn't happen to negotiate with them on it, that's.
Kind of how I see it, we would see what monies might be saved by people that don't want it, and then maybe, because seeding would be ideal, I think, for the people that want their grass back, with grass taken.
Well, I would, uh, let me offer this up then, is go ahead and approve money for seeding. And who we negotiate with, we still save the money, and it's still in our reserve. And if he needs the, the, uh, the, uh, the funds to go ahead and complete the project, take it to a full completion, then, uh, then he has that available.
So, I have a question, I don't know if you can answer this, David, the, um, I, I don't know what all of the different homes in Hasslet Park have as far as grass, and I'm not a grass expert. Um, but I, I believe, I think like the grass that I have in my yard, I don't think I can buy it as seed, um, so, there was some reason with, I can't think of it off the top of my head, but, so, if. Is there an issue that comes up with that, if there, if people have different kinds of grass, like I said, I'm not an expert on this topic, so.
The majority of Hasslet Park does have, uh, Bermuda, hybrid Bermuda grass, for most of them, there are a few that have St. Augustine. But if somebody's taking care of St. Augustine, it will take comfort and fill out the beauty, that's true.
Yeah, and.
It's very aggressive, it's taking care.
Yeah, and that's what I was saying, I have St. Augustine, and so I didn't know if at that point, like, if, if we, if we are gonna have residents who are particular, and maybe they prefer to, to do their own thing, I don't know.
I haven't had anybody ask about it, everybody was, when we told them, you know, they would be happy with the seed.
Okay.
All right, uh, any more discussion, I'd like to call for the vote, or I asked for a motion, is there a motion?
I have another question, sorry, um, the money, where it's gonna come from, because we talked about general fund, we talked about the transportation sales tax, street maintenance tax. Where's the one thirty-one nine twenty-nine cost going to come from?
The hundred and thirty-one nine twenty-nine could come from the transportation, but if you add on another fifty thousand, um, for sod, uh, there probably wouldn't be enough funds in that. So, uh, you can take the whole thing out of general fund, or you can take part of it out of the general fund. But, um, in looking at the estimate for the end of year, uh, in the transportation sales tax fund, there's only gonna be a balance of about a hundred and forty-one thousand in there, so this is going to use it, yes.
Could we use that up and then make up the difference from the general fund?
Yes, you can, that's, yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's, you couldn't do all of it from the transportation tax, but you could do the original amendment, just not the seeding.
And again, I would ask you that you consider go ahead and include some monies for, uh, seeding, and, uh, the establishment of that seed.
Would there be other companies that would come into the seeding, or this company be who you would choose?
Yes, no, no, there are, there's others that we've used, and that's probably what we would do, is stick, call out some of the other people, we know that that's what they do all the time. And see if we could get a better price, because we have done some projects out this size, and did give it to somebody that that's all. Yeah, we, we always try to do the best we can. Yeah, we, we always try to do the best we can with the money we get, try to do everything. And get you the best value we can possibly get for our.
This doesn't go to what we're currently talking about right here, um, but is it learned now that we, you know, a lot of projects, I would think we'd wanna take back to the restorative level. When you actually do a project, you actually put the streets in, if it's, if it was, they had sod to the thing, it should look exactly like, you know, when you had beforehand. I guess I'm just looking at the as-
The normal, what we normally.
I would like to on record and, and state that Mr. Rogers at the beginning of this project warned against this. Of putting this asphalt and concrete, understanding, uh, our city and the people and the neighborhoods.
We got out of the first phase of the first three streets, the number of complaints seemed like it would've been the right thing to do from the get-go on this project.
But he, he did, uh, warn against this. There's not any further, uh, could we have a motion?
I'll give it a shot. I motion that we change orders number two and three to DDM Construction Corp. And a budget amendment to the fiscal year twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one budget for Hasslet Park Street Projects. And to add fifty thousand to seed this project.
Motion is made to approve, um, change orders number two and three to the DDM Construction Corporation. And budget amendment for fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one for Hasslet Street Park, Hasslet Park Streets Project, and add fifty thousand dollars for seeding. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second, any further, uh, discussion, questions?
Yes, shouldn't we, uh, specify where this money comes from?
Uh, the money would come from the, uh, what the remainder is in the ta- sells, uh, street tax. Marcy, please go ahead.
Yes, the options are, there's, um, there's a projected balance in the street maintenance sales tax fund, where this original project for Hasslet Streets was budgeted, um, to cover the hundred and thirty-one thousand nine twenty-nine in the original amendment. Um, but there's, in my estimation, at the present time, not gonna be enough to fund the seeding portion. So, seeding portion would need to come from the general fund. Or you could do all of it from the general fund, if you so desired.
I would recommend, just to, your suggestions, go ahead and deplete the, uh, street maintenance tax. Is that the, what's the name of that line item again?
It's, um, the street maintenance sales tax fund, and the line item was the Hasslet Street Project.
Okay, it was deplete that fund?
Hasslet Park Streets Project.
And make up the difference from the general fund. Would you like to revise your motion? I'm sorry, Hector, would you revise your motion to that?
Yes, I'd like to revise the motion to, sorry, excuse me, to approve change order numbers two and three, DDM Construction Corp, and a budget amendment to the fiscal year twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one for the Hasslet Park Street Projects, and to add fifty thousand from the general fund.
And designating the funds where the guns from?
And, and designating the funds from, sorry, the fifty thousand from the general fund.
Very good. Uh, 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 motion is made or been revised to approve the change orders number two and three on the DDM Construction Corp. And a budget amendment to the fiscal year twenty twen- twenty to twenty twenty-one budget for Hasslet Park Street Projects, adding fifty thousand dollars for seeding, and designating that, uh, the fifty thousand for seeding would come from the general fund. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There is a second, any further discussion or question?
So, as far as the fifty thousand for seeding, is that, how does that work? Is, so, Mr. Rogers would go back and get, um, negotiate with DDM or a separate company for that? And then, does any of that come back to council, or at that point?
No, the funds are already provided, he will get the best value, the best. He's going to approach companies that, that's all they do, uh, rather than going through DDM Construction Corp. So, that'd be a separate, uh, uh, negotiation from his aspect. And he would have the funds, he would not need to bring it back to council.
Okay, well, I assume though, if, if for whatever reason that becomes, it, we get some quote for higher than fifty thousand, then that's when it would come back to council, but anything below that?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I would assume this is sort of a not to exceed fifty thousand.
And I'm, and I'm all for the, the one thirty-one, I just feel with budget happening discussions next week, we should wait on the seeding, and if, I mean, if I'm the only one that feels that, then that's okay, I can get voted, but.
No, and I will tell you, if you were gonna wait on anything, seeding would be the only thing to because of weather. You know, always easier to grow grass when the weather's a little bit cooler, but, of these guys, some of the people we use, they know how to do it, even in the hottest weather, it doesn't make any difference, they know how to do it. It just takes water, this is a little cheaper in the long run, cause there's a little bit less labor. But, then you gotta have people waiting for the next three, four months to have grass, some people aren't, they happy with that.
What is that timeframe, if you were to go out for RFPs from the new places to potentially get that? Cause it's already July.
We could probably have, within two weeks, we would probably have enough practice, enough people to take from somebody. Long before they probably would have everything pulled out and replaced.
I would like to make a, just a, a, a comment about waiting, if we were to wait two, three months, you know, one, we've been blessed with some mild weather, we haven't had the heat that we would ta- typically see in a Texas summer. And, uh, I'm very thankful of that. But nonetheless, is if we wait months, um, we could see rains that would cause just bare dirt to start eroding. So what it, you know, the grass can establish in a matter of weeks.
Always better to get the grass established. Bring it up, the best time to grow grass is not right now, normally. I'm Texas in July, but.
But that's not, that's not, I mean, we're not having a normal July.
No, we're having some awful good weather right now.
And another concern I have is that we have the one forty-one and the already budgeted, and we've already taken hundred and fifty-two out of general fund. I just, I just think of the numbers and with the budget coming up, and, and then preparing for that. I'm not against seeding it at all, but I just feel that we should let them finish the project, get them out of there. And then, do the next, next phase, which is seed the people that want their topsoil seeded.
Okay, well, the motion on the table right now is to include seeding, fifty thousand dollars from general fund. So, let's, uh, finish that particular motion.
Discussing, right, discussing that motion, that, yeah, that's, um, yeah, I think that's, that's it, I, I did have one other question though while we're on this. The fee for engineering, so that, it, that's five thousand, because it's gonna have to be re-engineered with the topsoil and the removal, is that correct? We're not re-engineered, what, can you explain that to me a little bit?
It's not so much re-engineering, but there will be some engineering that has to be done based on slopes of different places. You're gonna have different slopes, we're gonna have to be dealt. So, some place may get, you know, foot off the road, why don't we, somebody may have paper down, it may take five. And that's all gotta be figured out, know who's getting fucked, how it's gonna work, know in advance, but each yard, look.
Do you feel five thousand is, do you feel comfortable with that amount?
Yeah, I feel like we're in good shape.
Any more questions, Council? Alright, the motion has been made, uh, is, uh, any further discussion? Any more questions? If not, can I, uh, is there a second?
I second, I second already.
Oh, you second, okay. Very good, okay, you seconded the original.
I second, I, I second the amendment.
Oh, did you?
Yes.
Forget me. I got caught up in the conversation. Alright, so there's motion seconded on the table, uh, all in favor. Four, four, all opposed. One opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Item seven C, discuss, consider and act on a budget amendment in the amount of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to remove excavated material behind the fire station. And I'm going to, Mr. Rogers can address this, but I'm going to, uh, give you what happened on this, is the Hasslet Park project. And I don't know for whatever reason, the, uh, contract was let to take all that, uh, all the spoils, and what's not used to dress out the streets, is to pile them up behind the fire station. And, well, that's caused a problem in and of itself, um, there was no plan to use it, we had no need of it. And currently, um, well, one several cons- one concern is, two, it's taking up all the parking spots for the, uh, youth, um, uh, baseball, softball folks. The other is, uh, evidently kids are out there riding those hills, which is not, uh, the best thing in the world to do. Um, cause there's no one out there monitoring them. Uh, but the other is with the, uh, uh, winds that we have, it sweeps across, particularly if there's a south wind, and carries that concrete dust over into Brentwood. And those people are breathing that stuff, and getting in their air conditioners, things of that nature, so. It's, we need to get rid of it, it's not an item that we need, we can particularly wait. Uh, it should've never been done in the first place, that's my comment. Mr. Rogers, you can take it from there.
Yeah, as the mayor said, uh, that has been a complaint from both, I guess, a, uh, about the how many takes up the entire, being near the parking lot. Uh, but also, we are getting in more and more dust. So we either gotta figure out some way to control the dust, means some kind of sprinkler watering system or something, or gotta get rid of it. To get it back into control.
Well, well, doing the sprinkler system on there, uh, gain some parking spots?
No, that would just cut down, that would solve one issue, but not both issues.
I'm just being funny.
It will solve the dust, but nothing else.
I don't know, have y'all seen that pile back there? I call it Little Mount Everest.
That, I, the comment I usually get is the mountain behind the park.
Well, I think there's a true lessons learned on this project, that we'll never do that again. Uh, we don't need to be keeping anything like that, particularly if there was no plan for it, uh, asphalt, concrete, it, uh, now, uh, if there were a plan for it, I can understand it, but there was none, but we need to, we need to get it out. Unfortunately, it's expensive.
So I have a question. Couldn't be used on to improve the roads out there?
We actually have offered it out to a couple of contractors and hope that, you know, we might get somebody to take it off our hands. Uh, we haven't got anybody yet that is, you know, agreed to do it. Have one that I'm supposed to be meeting tomorrow, that I'm hoping might be willing to take it for a project, they're for. But, it is what it is right now, and if they don't take it, I don't know. Some of the wind it might have.
Have you spoken to Zachary?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they're not in.
They, biggest problem for them is where it is, the haul, they're getting so much dirt, soil off of the I thirty-five project now, that they're having to waste over there and use, that they might need it, but it might be two years now, three years from now, four, close to the end of the project.
Well, if you had, if you had a new skid, could you spread it on the roads out there off?
Some of it, but not to the amount that we have. We've got so much of it, it's a problem, is what to do with that amount.
Even if you did that, would it still, you still have a dust problem?
It would have a dust problem.
Well, there really no solution other, unless you put some kind of asphalt on top of it or mix it, just to get rid of it.
Uh, seal it with either some sort of sealer or asphalt, some, keep the dust.
You know, I don't, I don't, Council, I, I'm always, uh, wary of throwing good money after bad uses. I mean, this was not an intentional use, it's just kinda trying to find a way to make something work. And I, I can understand that and appreciate it, uh, it's just, this, this shit has never happened. Again, I'll, I'm on record saying, Mr. Rogers did recommend not doing this.
We would like, uh, we could haul it off, and like I said, we're still gonna work and try our best, find somebody, take. There's gotta be somebody, this would be a great thing, if somebody was building a new road or something, this wouldn't be some bad material to have underneath.
Is anybody here on the council, wants some material?
That kind of road, that, that long, well, nobody's really got anything coming up to use it.
Do, do you know how many truckloads that is approximately? Any idea?
Leave. It was a hundred and, no, there's seventy-five hundred cubic yards, so that would be talking twenty yard, twenty ton tractor trailer trucks, that's a lot of truck.
Twen- twenty truckloads?
No, that's twenty tons per truck, that's what a tractor trailer will haul, for seventy, almost seven thousand cubic tons of that stuff.
Cubic yards, or?
Uh, it works out to about the same, it's close to seven thousand tons, about six thousand five hundred and forty-two cubic.
I see, okay. So is there truly, this is just waste? You know, there, no one out there's yard or anything else like that would be selling this, or?
Trying to a couple of contractors that have some roadwork coming up, trying to convince if they might, and the project close enough, and haul might work out for them, that's generally the biggest thing, is haul, is the big thing. Everybody, you know, a lot of people look at, yeah, they'd love to have free stuff, we can bring, we can't bring. But we're looking at a couple of projects, uh, both sides, that have some roadwork coming in, that could use probably a little bit of space.
I would say this, that David's been, uh, I mean, we've been looking at this for quite a while, and I think that, uh, uh, about three weeks ago, a company came out and took a couple of, uh, five gallon buckets worth of the stuff, and take it to a lab to have it analyzed, just so they just can't come and pick it up, they gotta know what's in it. And, and see if they can use it, but, problem is, they haven't contacted us. And that's the kind of response, they'll come and look at it, but not contact us, to say yea or nay.
And like I said, I've got one who wants to come by tomorrow, but, again, I don't know what his opinion may be or won't. I'm just happy I'm getting more people to come look.
I would, I would ask Council that if, if you could find a way to do this, is to, uh, approve this amount, we know we can get it all hauled off for this amount. And let David still keep working. Uh, if he should find in a couple of weeks, give him a saying, you gotta two weeks to, uh, find a contractor to take this. Is to, uh, let them have it, if that's the case, but also specifying they gotta take it all, and within several weeks' time. But also is that, if you don't find that company within two weeks, that we can go ahead and commence starting the haul off. If they should get contacted during our haul off, we could stop that, and if they would take, and still, along the line, realize some savings from this, but if all else fails, that Mr. Rogers would have the funds to go ahead and remove that entire pile.
I probably sound like a broken record. Um, I would like to wait and put this in our budget discussions, cause I, I think it's important, and I don't know, how much more do they have of baseball season? Um, I, I'm, I'm not sure if, where they are in their season right now. Just, if there's people that are looking, indeed, and my other question, DDM doesn't want it back? Okay.
They'll haul it, they'll haul it up to their place, but for a fee.
For a fee, okay.
Let me, uh, let me, so if we leave this for, you know, our budget discussion, you know? Right. right. But our new budget won't be affected till after November the second. We got this dirt pile sitting out there for another six months.
That's why I was wondering how much longer HSA was going to be out there.
Well, it's not really, I mean, agents covering up the parking lot is one. We got a health issue out there with all the dust going into Brentwood is the, probably the more uh, pressing one. But there's multiple issues there. One, kids playing on that pile, you know, riding their bikes up and down the thing using, what BMX, whatever they call it. And then, uh,
Bit of a convenience.
So there's, you know, there's three factors I can name of to go ahead and get rid of it.
Just question real quick, when you brought up DDM real quick, you know, they probably, this was a cost savings off of their proposal, but is it going to cost them a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to haul this away? Are we gonna, is the, it, how many?
Mostly all truck, that's almost all of the cost of this truck.
This trucking cost?
We're not paying any kind of disposal fees. All just trucking one side to another. About diesel fuel and man tires and oil and diesel.
So is it worth, I, um, I was looking at, uh, your estimate for the bid. Is it worth reaching out for other bids as far as, see other companies?
Oh, yeah. This, this is just, you know, we had to get some kind of number to work with, so that's what we went with. Yeah, we would still try to set the time. Some, but we can't get rid of it. Somebody's free, we still try to get other bids, try to get somebody that's not be closer. Any place that's closer would be better. Closer the less trucking cost or the less it costs.
Okay, and that, that might be worth it as far as getting more, taking that time to get more bids while also, I know you said that someone's coming out tomorrow, maybe give us a little bit, not a ton of time, but a little bit of time to explore those options for more bids and also if maybe, maybe this person tomorrow decides that they want it.
I'm hoping I'm sending Jim an email tomorrow saying, hey, I got somebody that wants all of it. And he can be the happiest guy on earth telling all of y'all. Hey, it's, it's, it's not a problem.
So I guess question, um, also on that too then is we, if we gave you a time limit on, you know, would you I think Mayor Holsey was saying two weeks or a month or, you know, whatever that is to actually go find out what you can do with this and give a time limit on it, but then address it if we don't see anything in that movement in that timeframe. Then we immediately do something. If we start seeing some RFPs coming back, something that's happening good, maybe we could address it more in the, more into the other budget, but this allows us to go ahead and address it now if we need. If, if, if we, if we had to, we could go address it now, but we also look at the time in there that if it gets pushed a month and a half, we might as well be thinking maybe about it and.
Well, I, I'm, I'm taking the aspect, we got more than enough money in our budget, in our reserve. We got five million dollars plus in our reserves overall. And, uh, these are immediate needs. Uh, my, our focus, my focus is anyway, is taking care of what we got. I mean, this, this is to help resolve one of the last uh, construction issues that we need to deal with right now, but, uh, have been in the past. But, uh, clean this up, uh, you know, we're talking about quality of life with people in Brentwood, a hazard out there for kids. And yeah, we're taking some parking spaces away, most all of them, some hazard park, but I think the, uh, eliminating the hazard and the quality of life and, uh, air quality and issues uh, for Brentwood are the predominant ones. And to ask that we wait for the next budget year to come along, I, I, I wouldn't, uh, we have the money, we have more than the money.
And, and I don't think I'm proclaiming to wait. I'm saying let's go ahead and approve. I'm saying let's look at, prove it now, but if it starts pushing out that we're not getting anything, then we can probably if you're saying Mar- Marcy would say we have enough money in the general fund to take care of this.
Yes, I'm, there is enough money and it would come from the general fund.
So, uh, for this amount of money, does that trip any flags for competitive bidding requirement?
Yes, council member, uh, any expenditure over fifty thousand dollars requires competitive bidding, so, um, that.
Yeah, that would be my thing. By the time we put together the bid, try to get it out, that gives us enough time. Hopefully some of these people not free would happen and we just recall the bids and be done.
How, how long has this pile been out there?
Get a bid package and all put out. That's probably three to four weeks.
No, 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 the dirt pile, the actual dirt pile, how long has it been sitting there?
Oh, gosh, since it started with the start of the project and has to park.
Which is what, last year or two years ago?
Oh, it's been like four months, five months?
Four months.
What's a, would, if I made a motion that I'm kind of, I like your idea about the, the timeline of like thirty days. Um, and if it hadn't been taken care of, then that money would be allotted. But then, like you said, we still have to come back to with the, the bids to us.
Got to go out the bid, we're still going to have to prove the bid. All, that's really the most important thing. We want to go forward with this, get an estimate, we can start putting together bid package to send out, see what we get.
But could we make a motion to go out to the bid process for up to a hundred and thirty thousand? We're not spending the money. We're just asking for the bids to be.
Yeah, that gets us started down the road.
That's my motion, if anybody.
Well, let me, let me ask this, uh, council member, uh, tomorrow. If you want, and that's a good idea, just go ahead and, uh, authorize, uh, to go out to bid on this. But I don't know that I'd put a, a, a limit on it. If it's a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, then it's just no good. Just thought I would recommend, you know, authorizing to go out for bid.
That sounds good. I'll make that change. So I make a motion to have the public works director, um, go out, I don't know if it's for bid, was for quote, um, for the removal of the material at, behind fire station.
Motion's been made to, um, for the public works director to go out for bid for the removal of materials, the spoils behind the fire station. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there, there is a second. Any further discussion? I call for the vote, all in favor? Five, four, no opposed, motion passes. Thank you, counsel, very much.
Thank y'all.
Item eight, public hearings, ordinances, resolutions and action items. Eight A is award of a contractor Belchif and Associates for Sweetgrass Development Civil Engineering Review. Um, this is, uh, uh, Sweetgrass has a civil engineering review requirements and, uh, uh, we need this to be done. I know that Belchif and Associates is, uh, well experienced. This is in their expertise. Um, and, uh, many of you know Belchif and Associates as well. Uh, Mr. Quinn, any other comments?
Yes, sir. The, uh, this office requested a quote from Belchif Associates regarding the civil review of plans for phase one of the Sweetgrass development. As you can see before you, the response was, uh, that all these tax are identified and the price of fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Mike Anderson is here from Belchif Associates answering questions you may have. The, uh, I'm, I'm, also, I'm sorry, mayor, the funding comes from the one percent plan review fee, which we conservatively estimated is a ten million dollar project, which leaves us a hundred thousand dollars at the minimum to afford the contract.
That's all I was going to mention, that it's, uh, is, this is a pass through fee developers are ultimately responsible for.
Just have to say, it would sure be nice if we had a city engineer, fifty-seven thousand dollars, a lot of money.
Uh, well, a, uh, I'm not going to comment for that. In that, uh, this is a quality firm, they have high expertise. They know exactly what to do, uh, with their experience and expertise. They, uh, uh, know to where to go to in these documents. Uh, they know our systems and they know our city as well.
So, uh, it looks to me like a lot, I read the bid, looked to me like a lot of expenses get updated uh, since they were last did work for the city. So hopefully, if we do go with them, a lot of that is uh, won't necessarily be repeated. Uh, al- also though, the this is more than fifty thousand, so doesn't it have to be competitively bid, city attorney?
With this monitor in the way, I'm going to stand up. Sorry, I can't see y'all with the monitor here. Uh, for, uh, engineering fees, thank you. For engineering services, uh, you do not competitively bid them. Uh, you're required under the Professional Services Procurement Act to make a determination of who you think is most qualified. And then you negotiate a contract with the firm or the vendor that you think is the most qualified, um, to re- render those services. So, um, you don't have to do an RFQ for engineering services. If you're familiar with the engineering firm, uh, you can make an award to whoever you think is most qualified. If you feel like you want, uh, qualifications of firms to determine, um, you certainly can request that and then make a determination of, of who is most qualified. This is a, this is not a, I know we have an item on the agenda for uh, the interim city engineer, but thi- this is a contract engineer, specific contract services, which the city does from time to time. Y'all have entered into a contract with Kimley Horn for the road project. You enter into contracts with other engineers for s- specific projects. And in those circumstances, you determine again who you think's most qualified, then you go negotiate and enter into a contract with them. So in this instance, if you're comfortable with this, uh, contract and appointment, you certainly can, can make it. Um, if you want to look at other potentials for this contract, that's up, it's totally up to the council um, on making an award of an engineering contract. Does that answer your question, sir?
Now, let me say that if we did, if you desire to look at other firms, we'll have to go out with the RFQ process and advertise that. So we're looking at, uh, uh, probably give those folks thirty days to respond. And then we choose, you interview them, then you choose one, and then you go into the negotiation for the price. So we're looking at a several month process here possibly. Uh, you know, if you're doing a fifty-seven million dollar project, uh, and all that, uh, this is, this is nothing. But nonetheless.
Is, is this a cost type contract or is this a fixed price?
Uh, I, I think what was submitted is a cost not to exceed fifty, but, but he certainly can.
Mike, would you like to address this?
Good evening. Good to see, um, familiar faces up through here, both up there and then in the audience. I didn't want to speak to Mr. Rob's question, um, regarding B and list of tasks that we have prepared. We do have on there, we need to familiarize itself with ordinance change in two thousand fifteen. We have to just sort of prove some business. I've already taken, take care of them. Um, but there's several sections or state city engineer person reviewing as the city in, responsible to make recommendations. Also with regards to preliminary plot you have before you is cost not to exceed fifty-seven thousand. Review the phase one structure. Before you see that flat, city engineer, person viewing, was to make a written recommendation to be in the council about the status of that project, whether or not you have adequate system or whether or not that project is going to work. So I went through and downloaded the preliminary plot for grants when we were asked by Mr. Quinn to provide with a price to work at that on June twenty-fourth. So between now, twenty-fourth, I've had opportunity to go through and assemble, um, some information on the project that's available on your internet or on your website, I should say, um, regarding the project status. Now, there's quite a few tasks in there that may be, um, may have been handled by your prior city engineer. Those records weren't available. As far as written recommendations for your different systems. However, reviewing the staff reports that were provided, listening to the P and Z, uh, meeting, uh, regarding the preliminary plot. There was no mention of written recommendations in the city regarding the ability of this for that. So I, I guess what I'm trying to say is there may be some things that we just don't have, traffic impact analysis, analyzation of the downstream sewer system that was completed. And if that's the case, then we don't have to spend right now. I've got to put about three guys on it full time, get this thing done. So I don't anticipate us needing that amount of speed. You know, when I get a request of, hey, what does this get cost? I got to look at it. And I'm coming in cold, but, um, like I said, feel good about where we're at. Um, I don't know all the answers yet, but I know looking at the preliminary plot, we're sending sewers through the Caraway addition. Just looking, stay on your GIS, show an eight inch sewer line. I can't tell how many phases of this five hundred lot subdivision are going to go through there, but we may have a problem there. I know the downstream portion of Buffalo Creek sewer line that we designed half acre lots many moons ago probably got some issues, some surcharge issues, some of the manholes down close to Westport Parkway. Now there's adjacent roadways through there, both, uh, I guess Blue Mound as well as Intermodal are called out, thoroughfare plan. No, no information in the preliminary plot on those roadways, whether those roadways being contemplated or taken, taken into account as well for the budget, for the service and assessment plan, part of the bid. There's no mention for the adjacent roadway budget. Your ordinance requires that a developer that comes in is required to build a minimum of half road, potentially more depending on the traffic impact. I don't have that document, so I can't, I don't know what the recommendation is. I don't know if they're done. Those are all the things that we have to do to make sure that, you know, you're not approving something that is going to be an issue, right? Can't say, well, we'll place the sewer line in two thousand twenty-four program, cap improvement plan, knowing we're going to be creating issues for James and his guys license. And I've got a license too. I don't want to get divorced, so I want to do what's right, what I have to do in law. And I pulled your code of ordinances as well as state law and, you know, very familiar with, with the city. We've got, started here in nineteen ninety-nine, here through about two thousand fifteen, I believe. You know, it's not going to take too much time for us to get brought up to speed, but it is going to take some time to figure out how all this ties together. Go to the service and assessment plan, it's going, three or four different phases. You go to the preliminary plot, there's a phase line missing. So I don't know how many houses are going to connect to what roads. We're talking about connected future roads that, that some parkways not built. What about future Intermodal built? So, you know, there's, there's different things that are going to come into play once we get into this, but if authorized to work, can't, I'd take a flyer and say, well, I got to know enough to put together a price and come talk to you this evening. Talk intelligently about it. We've already got some hours, best project, you know, appreciate the opportunity, walk through and give you our recommendation based on what's been submitted to the city. Then that's slated for P and G, forty-seven. We've got a couple.
I have a question for you. After you do the review and it goes back to their engineer, they are, the onus is on them, correct, as the developer and their engineering to make sure they have met. I mean, you, we review it, you review it, but then if there's something that's not up to snuff, that it, is it their responsibility at that point or how much is?
Yes, ma'am. And, and, um, you know, your, your ordinance, there's no, there's no engineering manual that you could create that covers every different situation. And that's why it's the profession, right? And you hire professionals to go through and view it. So when we look at drainage, they're proposing to drain, uh, one, six lots through this one guy that happens to buy on the corner. Well, that's a problem. That's not addressed. That's good engineering practice that you only have lots, lot drainage, you drain it down the side. They may be taking, it appears, this preliminary, look at preliminary plan, that they've got a massive flat. They may be taking, it appears, this preliminary, look at preliminary plan, that they've got a massive flat bottom channel proposed west boundary. A little similar to the one over there. Create additional, uh, massive flat bottom, flat channel, instead of putting that water pipe buried. Well, it saves money, right? Not have buried pipe, but that's kinda where, where we come in, is we say, here's our recommendation. We can only do what au- what's authorized under state law and ordinance, but like I said, there's, there's no situation that can be covered by a manual. It will say it's our recommendation that this occur, this occur, and then if there's dispute, well, you all get the pleasure of mediating between yourself and Mr. Tate, or whoever's representing both as well. So, yeah, we would put together written recommendations, we return our findings, we'd say, recommend approval, recommend denial, recommend this complete. Don't even know if completed, all things that we have to do, make that initial determination complete, and then go through, review it against the board. So, we would put that together, float that back, would go through the ringer, then the onus would be on them for, for resubmitting. Additional information may result in additional comments or review time. Little disclaimer we put on there, they may have to change up the world, right? Take that one more, create other issues. That's typically the process. The SAP for this particular project, uh, showed twenty-seven million dollars, and I saw thirty-one million dollars total project. Five phases, showed commercial lots, city parks, some other stuff. Well, none of that's contained in the preliminary plot. We got, we got conflicting information all over. Guys have a pit in place that I understand was approved. Part of that is certification, city that authorized improvements outlined in the board are designed and built. So, you, you gotta make sure that the speed is being charged. That all those components are being, being put in. Gotta make sure they're, they're engineered, and then money in there for us to make sure that those are built. Best laid plan, don't go anywhere if there's somebody out there. So, kind of our role, we do it for eight general law cities, all we do. Any other specific questions about our proposal, or our task, project in general, might be able to answer? We wanna keep this close to this.
Uh, unless there's any, uh, you know, we have a motion. These are emotional. Oh, yes. No, we're on eighty-eight.
So, the only other comment I do have, um, was kind of to, to echo, this would have, this would be included in what our city engineer had done previously, correct, as be part of his task? Brought on this question for.
It would have been.
It would have been, okay. And are there more development plans coming that might possibly?
Yes.
Be this amount?
So, I, I know, Mayor, you mentioned that, um, if we. Yes, can, okay. Um, that if we considered, not sure what the right term is for this, but, um, not that I'm, I'm sure Belchif and Associates would do a great job, and they seem very informed, but, you know, doing our due diligence, making sure we're considering all the options. Um, you had made a comment that it might, this could drag on for a month or two, um, but it does sound like Belchif and Associates came back with, with this estimate in a week or two, but on the twenty-fourth, so it seems like it might not necessarily take two months to, just to explore our options.
Well, let me, let me say this. First, you, we have a timeline that we have to meet. Otherwise, this plat is approved because it didn't get reviewed. What is that date, Mr. Quinn?
That means it's ministerially approved because no action was taken on by the P's, P and Z, and after thirty days of submission, uh, if no action is taken regarding the, the final plat, then it's approved.
What date is that?
Uh, Wes.
Do we have that date?
Wes would know.
Sorry, uh, the, the deadline would be, I believe it's gonna be July twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, something in that range. I mean, uh, the way the calendar set out on the P and Z calendar is, is, is tight.
Okay, so this is something we need to do.
I'm ready to make a motion. I am not super thrilled about the amount, but I do understand the, um, sense of urgency. So, I make a motion to award the contracted Belchif and Associates for the Sweetgrass Development Civil Engineering Review, not to exceed fifty-seven thousand dollars and five hundred, to be taken out of the one percent of special plan review fee.
A motion is made to award the contracted Belchif and Associates for the Sweetgrass Development Civil Engineering Review for an amount not to exceed fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars.
I'll second.
There is a second. Any further discussion? I call for the vote. All in favor? Five, four, motion passes. All right, item eight B, consider and discussion, consideration, discussion, and action regarding the appointment of Belchif and Associates as an interim engineer. Uh, we do have ongoing projects that are coming up. Um, there's always a continual need for, uh, asking, uh, city engineer questions at times from their various personnel. Um, I've, I've asked Belchif and Associates if they would consider being our interim city engineer until we can go through this process of, uh, finishing up this analysis that, uh, Mr. Councilmember Ricketts has requested to do a comparative analysis of what the Belchif and Associates, uh, we have the retainer fee and their, what their duties would be versus as compared to the cost of our city engineer and the other personnel that we have in place. Uh, and the reason of that was, is that going back to twenty fifteen, from nineteen ninety-nine to twenty fifteen, all we had was Belchif and Associates. They did everything, all of them. Now, we got about, uh, two other people on board that full-time. They unload that, so all Belchif and Associates would be concerned with is engineer. And that's what this interim city engineer would be. Would not be doing, um, um, the, uh, such as, uh, planning and development. They assisted heavily in planning and development and doing reviews of these type sorts of things. They were focused purely on, uh, engineering. Now, when due projects would come up, if during their tenure as a interim engineer, it is those project fees that pay for that engineering review, not the city. And that's where it lies, those, uh, such as the one percent, such as Sweetgrass here. That's what's going to pay for this fee. That you just proved. Uh, but I'd like to write Mike back up to the Mike, uh, council, you asked. Uh, he or any of us, uh, my, Mr. Quinn or myself, any question that you would like?
Yes, Mayor Holsey, I just wanna make a comment, 'cause I think you just heard it here too, you know, where, um, Mike has turned around and said that he had to get three people just to get up speed, get to plan and zoning by then tomorrow. Whereas if we would've had the city engineer probably there, that's the, I think there's a good reason that we need to have something interim here for this ex- exact reason. Until we get that comparative, listen, see what, how we move forward.
Is there a timeframe on this contract? Um, I mean, it just says approve. I, I would feel more comfortable if there was, uh, you know, ninety days, sixty days. Um, who they report to, just some more information about, uh, 'cause I, I, I'm all for an interim. Um, just a little more information on what that would entail. I don't know if you had a chance to talk, speak to that?
Um, Mr. Paul, Mr. Quinn asked us about feeling point. Did have a great deal of discussion, but. I think we're comfortable with what I say for free. This point really be pointed so that we can review it for, for any. As the, you know, there's other discussions about the painter, no rechange, that those. See what they're trying to be right, through that. This point. Counsel's pledge with the timeframe. Prefer easy.
Do you feel the analysis will be ready by next meeting?
Yes.
To move forward?
Yeah.
Uh, will the fees be the same that, similar to what we saw before with the contract that we, that we had, uh, two council meetings ago?
Uh, no.
Yeah, we've got, we've got retainer rates, non.
Okay.
The, uh, here the rate, fees are different from the, uh, non-retainer rate, or the retainer rate, but these are, these are pure contracts. Retainer rate, retainer rate are, uh, less purely because they're not injured. You've seen that before. Now, if you would like to go into executive session to review these rates more in, uh, detail, uh, that's fine. Uh, we can do that. That's why I placed it on the agenda. We wanna discuss fees. But, uh, the pure, uh, there would be no retainer associated with this interim. Uh, so we would be paying standard rate to the firm.
But hourly, 'cause it was seventy-five, fifty a month, retainer, ninety thousand annually, but you said it'd be hourly.
Yes.
We can do hourly.
Yeah, that, that, uh, what, what we spoke to them with, Jim and I, was on, on an hourly basis.
I believe the non-retainer rate may be three to three percent per hour, not double. Five, ten bucks.
If I remember correctly, the, the contract that we saw, you could terminate it at any time. Is that correct?
Yes.
I think it would make more sense to sign the original contract and terminate it whenever we wanted to, but that's, that's just my opinion.
That's, you're gonna see that in two weeks. That's the to- it's a different topic. What this is, is a appointing, uh, a firm as this year interim engineer. They can review whatever comes down the path and address whatever engineering issues there are with the city. In two weeks' time, you'll see that comparative analysis, as I'm bringing forward, again, Belchif and Associates. It might be as the best engineer firm available for the city. And, uh, it will show a comparative analysis, their cost versus, uh, city employee cost to do that same job. That's what that analysis.
Also, that's a good show, city employee plus it's a project. Good, and.
Oh, yeah, it will include the, uh, those, uh, I believe we got five, four, was it four or five, you know, firms that we, uh, have ongoing annual contracts with? Yeah, and, and just as a preface to next week, is that all of that's being incorporated, but that's what Belchif and Associates, they did all, it was all current fee. So, that's, uh, uh, Councilmember Rob, you know, I know that, uh, you know, there is apparent safety. But I think when we sit down, I'm not gonna make the judgment right now one way or the other, but it's, you'll, you'll see, you'll see. The value of it.
And also, again, I, I think you're probably also including too, the cost of just having a city engineer is just not itself. There is a cost for four oh one, there's a cost for a lot of different things for.
Oh, all the benefits. No, we're not talking about just, uh.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm also saying too, you know, we, you know, we have, I could tell you right now, from where I work right now, that I may only get paid a certain amount. I'd love to get the true benefit that I had for that entire.
Yeah. Well, let me, I, Council, I need to steer us back onto the agenda item. All right. Uh, it's eight B, consider, discussion, and action regarding the appointment of Belchif and Associates as interim in, in city engineer.
Mayor Holsey?
Yes.
I move to appoint, um, Belchif and Associates as interim city manager until the further discussion.
City engineer?
City engineer, sorry. I apologize. City, interim city engineer. Sorry, Jim.
Well, it's still, it, uh, I mean, you're hitting on a couple of fronts that wasn't worked there, okay?
Belchif and Associates as the interim city engineer, um, until we get the comparative analysis and make a further decision.
So, you're saying for two weeks?
We, we'd have to make the further deci- the actual decision.
Let me ask if you would amend your motion, just to make it simply, simply appoint Belchif and Associates as city interim city engineer. And, and drop the rest of it.
Okay, I would like a timeframe on it, on the motion, if you feel comfortable with that.
That's good, Ike.
Yeah, just the remainder of the fiscal year and see what.
Would you amend your motion to, uh, reflect, uh, appointment, uh, Belchif and Associates as the interim city engineer for the remainder of this fiscal year?
I make the amendment to appoint Belchif and Associates interim city engineer for the remainder of the fiscal year.
All right, motion's been made. Is there a second?
I second that.
There is a second. Any further discussion?
Where, and where's the money? Is it, you're gonna be taking from? Sorry. How about the money today?
Well, that'd be the interim, uh, the city engineer salary thing.
Yeah, that we, that, that money's there, and that's what we'll use. Any, any review fees, despite this Sweetgrass project, the development pays for those fees. All right, motion's been made and seconded to appoint Belchif and Associates as interim city engineer for the remainder of the fiscal year. I call for the vote. All in favor? There's five, four, no opposed. Uh, motion passes. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Uh. I would ask that, uh, council, can we have a, uh, about a five-minute recess? All right, uh, I, uh, council is in recess, uh, at eight forty-nine PM, uh, July the sixth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, let's be back here at, uh, in six minutes. That'd be five till nine. Thank you. Uh, let's be back here at, uh, in six minutes. That'd be five till nine. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, uh, if you take your seats, please. I'd like to call back into session the city council meeting, uh, for, uh, July sixth, twenty twenty-one at nine fifty-seven P M. Excuse, eight fifty-seven P M. Thank you very much. Eight fifty-seven P M, we're back in session. And we are with item eight C. Hold a public hearing, discuss, consider, and act on a recommendation regarding the amendment of land use assumptions, capital improvement plans, and possible amendments to the city impact fee. Presentation, Mr. Quinn?
Tina Hanson of Garver and Associates is the, uh, representative of Garver here, who's here to answer any questions and present the, uh, rather lengthy, but a brief explanation of the impact fees. Uh, this went before the C I A C in the meeting in May was approved unanimously, the recommendations of the capital improvements and the impact fee. Uh, and that is, that is, that's where we are to date, and this is a simple explanation, not an in-depth, you know, explanation of, of just an outline of what was done.
Um, thank you for being here tonight. Um, Tina Hanson with Garver Engineers. We prepared the wastewater master plan and impact update report. The process that we use is outlined in the local government code chapter three ninety-five. Outlines the process required to follow to update impact fees. So the first step in the impact fee is to, uh, develop a wastewater system capital improvement plan based on the adopted land use assumption that your capital improvement size for the city adopted and presented to council and council approved, um, back with the water master. Um, we use those, uh, land use assumptions to identify the wastewater flows needed for projected growth and then identify the size of lines, the capital improvements required to fill those wastewater. Once we do that, we identify how much that flow is for current customers and current development. That flow and that capital group for new development. And that's how we calculate the impact fee that is attributable to new development, uh, based on those. So that off, you have questions?
Only on new development course, about sixteen percent increase. We're still, I see it has us in the bottom quarter or third of surrounding cities regarding, uh, impact fee.
Yeah, I noticed that, uh, Fort Worth on their agenda, I think, for this coming meeting, they're doing the same thing. I didn't read their report. I read ours report. I thought that was very, you did a very thorough job. But, uh, everybody's required to do this periodically and it's not at Fort Worth either.
Mayor, if I might, Rob, sorry. We do need to hold a public hearing, and then also, sir, the, um, we can act on it to accept the recommendation, but we will need an ordinance prepared to actually implement the change in the fees. And so we can prepare that and bring that back. Uh, we have thirty days after the public hearing is held and in, under chapter three ninety-five to actually adopt an ordinance. So we can bring that back for a future agenda and just put it even on a consent agenda. But we will, we will need an ordinance on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, this is item two under eight C is the public hearing. I'd like to open up the, uh, public hearing at this time to, uh, have anyone who'd like to speak to or against this. Agenda item. Is there anybody who'd like to speak? Is anybody online that would like to speak? Can you check? All right, we have nobody online. And there's no one here to speak. So I close the public hearing. Okay, item three, discussion. There's no discussion. Let's go to item four, consider an action on recommendation. So we need a recommendation to create an ordinance. Is that right, right, Rob?
Uh, yes, sir, that'd be fine. You can recommend to accept the recommendation, um, and, and direct the, that an ordinance be prepared and we'll bring it back to you.
Understood. Council, hear that? Okay. So I, I believe it's to you, Council.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation and request the ordinance be brought back. Just, uh, regarding the amendment of the land use assumptions, capital improvement plans, and amendments to cities.
A motion is made to, uh, to accept the, um, amendment to the land use plan assumptions or the recommendations regarding the amendment to the land use assumptions, capital improvement plans, and possible amendments to the city impact fees and an ordinance thereof. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second.
There is a second. Any further discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor? Five, four? Five, four. No opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, Council. Eight D, consider an act regarding a professional service, services deposit and reimbursement agreement regarding Haslett Public Improvement District number five, LaTerra. Mr. Quinn?
Actually, this guy, Corey Admire is the, the attorney that presented this for on the half of, of LaTerra. This essentially is going to set for some things in motion that eventually lead to the issues of debt, uh, P I D bond debt in, I think, October, I think, but Rob knows more about it than I do.
Can y'all hear me through this? Okay, thank you. Uh, Mayor and Council, yeah, uh, first of all, Corey Admire, the developer's attorney, is online, so as I understand, she said, up, there she, I see her picture. Uh, so if there's information that, or questions that either I can't answer or that he wants to add, I would, I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that. Um, yes, so Council will recall LaTerra, uh, P I D number five for the LaTerra development. Phase one is already. It was created, the development gone forward, there was bond issuance for that first phase. Now they're ready to proceed with phases two and three, uh, the remaining territory, and so we will have to amend the, uh, service and assessment plan and levy the assessments against the property in that improvement area number two. That's the next step, in addition to then proceeding with the bond issuance for those future phases. So as we did with phase one, the city should not be out cost of the city consultant to make all that happen. That's the pitch consultant, the city attorney, engineering services that are all required to go through, um, that process to levy the assessments and the bond process, which will also include city's financial advisor, bond count. So what the developer has done is create this, uh, professional services, uh, deposit reimbursement agreement, which is what we've done on all the previous bids where the developer, um, fronts money through escrow agreement, uh, to pay for the city's professional consultant service. The city's not out the, from the general. And that's what's being presented tonight. Um, it is same, the title is a little different than what we've used in the past. It's the same basic document. I went through it, Corey prepared it, I went through it in the same basic format where money is escrowed and it's drawn down upon and gets to a certain point, then more money has escrowed up to, to a certain cap. Cap. But approval of this agreement will allow the city consultants staff to move forward with developers' requests for assessment levies and, and bond issue.
I have a question. You, uh, in describing that, I appreciate what you said. You said, uh, uh, cities engineering or professional services, uh, should not be charged to the city, or we should not be bearing costs. He said should not. Is that will not? We will not be paying for professional services associated with these type projects?
That's correct. That, that's what this agreement is to.
Okay.
That, that he will not be paying the consultant services for the establishment of his levy and the bond.
And I guess Miss, uh, Admiral will go more into this and describing the escrow amount and this cap that you spoke of.
I can. Sure, I, I'm happy to. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Can you turn her volume up? Is it? I'm sorry.
I'm hearing an echo on my end.
Do you want me to go through that, Mayor, or would you like Ms. Admire to do so?
I, you're comfortable with it? You've, uh, reviewed all that, please?
Yes, sir. So the agreement initially proposes a deposit of twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, into the escrow. If the amount is drawn down to five thousand dollars or less, then the developer agrees to replenish the escrow up to ten thousand dollars. Uh, and that process repeats until total, uh, billings reach the fifty thousand dollar cap, which is what I mentioned. Um, and if, if that point is reached, then, uh, the parties agree to renegotiate the agreement in order to complete.
And well, we just saw our review right there. It's costing us fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. And this doesn't cover that. So what will we do? What would happen here?
Well, the agreement, under, under the terms of this agreement, if the total billings have reached fifty thousand dollars, then we renegotiate developer in order to, we, we're under no, the city's under no obligation to, at that point, to pick up the cost. City decides.
So they, I'm looking at what are the consequences of, I mean, they, I guess they are, uh, if you hit this fifty thousand dollar limit, you're ready to negotiate a higher limit.
I think that's what we'll have to do. Corey, do you have any input on that?
Yeah, that's correct. That's correct.
And it says yes? I'm, I'm, I couldn't hear.
Yeah.
So that's correct.
Okay, very good. Well, those are my questions, counsel.
I've got a question here. It says if total billings exceed this amount, both parties shall agree in writing to amend this agreement to increase the cap. So does that mean the city is also gonna be on the hook for, if it exceeds fifty thousand?
No, sir, that's what I was referring to, is that if, if we get to that point, then what that is, that the developer and the city agree to amend the agreement to provide additional funding.
For the developer to provide the additional funding?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Could we address that now, Rob? Here are our terms.
Not sure it's necessary, Mayor. We've not really run into a problem with the cap. Additional phase to this thing. Development, so.
Are, are these reimbursements like we saw on the, on this flat approval, or is it typed any construction cost? The amount of monies that the city would be, or that the developer would be obligated to cover?
The engineering review, and Corey, if you have input, I'll let you address this, but my, my rec, like, the engineering review is to ensure that assessment amount is actually assessed to all of the lots and forcing to the benefits of the the developers engineer.
That's correct. That's correct, Rob.
The developers engineer actually, uh, the one sealing everything. Creating the plant specifications. They review those documents by hiring the agreement.
Right.
Correct. These improvements have not been, have not been constructed, so the review is going to be different. This is going to be on the opinion of probable cost in, in construction plan.
Did you hear that? I didn't hear it.
Yeah, Corey, we're having trouble really hearing you here in the council chambers. I don't know if there's any way to increase your volume, but.
Sure.
Is this coming over the speaker at all?
I'm, I'm hearing her.
Okay.
I, I'm, I'm apologize. I'm not able to increase it on, on, on.
If you understand what she's saying, Rob, please repeat it.
So Corey, would, would you repeat the last thing that you said?
Sure. The, uh, unlike, uh, the engineering services being discussed earlier, that is for review of improvements on a final, in preparation for, for the final plan, things that already been discussed. The process here is going to be before improvements, um, ha- have been put into the ground, reviewing of engineering plans and an opinion of probable costs that's submitted by the developers engineer.
Be able to hear that or not, sir? Okay, so this review, engineering review, is not the same review as what we were just referencing on week before. It's a flat review. This is a review of what's being submitted in conjunction with the Pid set levy assessment document. And it's a, just to make sure that the engineering cost, uh, probable opinion of cost is accurate and that it ac- accurately reflects the distribution to the properties within the Pid. So, yes, I, I, back to your original question, I think, uh, historically, this amount has worked. You ask whether this amount needed to be moved. Think we have built in a mechanism to address it if this amount exceeded. Historically, this think there's protection. Amount not enough on what, what we do and how it's addressed. Based on history, we're thinking.
It's senior ball court.
So Mayor, I'd like to, I'd like to move that, uh, we, um, approved, um, the professional service deposit and reimbursement agreement regarding Hasslet Public Improvement District number five, LaTerra.
Motion is made to approve, uh, the, uh, special service, services deposit and reimbursement agreement regarding Hasslet Public Improvement District number five, LaTerra. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There is a second. All in favor? Five. Motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Ms. Admire. Item eight E, approval of consulting agreement proposal with four T partnership to provide all necessary consulting services required to repair, replace, and or restore city of asset structures and buildings as outlined in the Texas Municipal League Improvement inter, intergovernmental risk pool, statement of loss and loss estimate prepared by TMLIRP. And this item regards the repair and maintenance of city buildings, facilities damaged by hailstorm event. This is all insurance related and Mr. Quinn, your own.
I am the insurance person as of this moment. Uh, we had a hailstorm. Um, I think many of you suffered damage on March twenty-fourth. Uh, subsequently, we requested that TML send out a claims adjuster to review all the city buildings, which they did, I think, on April ninth. Uh, they determined their losses thirty thousand dollars or so. And so when we got the claim, I was caught rock, called by James Colton, and he says, we have a service at no charge to the city. We pay these people to come out and manage your project for you. Uh, we'll still be involved. Uh, at some point, we've got to, we got to approve some bids for the, for repairs. But this is like, almost a, a situation where we have a, uh, TML approved, uh, manager that comes out and manages your roofing project. I know David really wanted to, but I talked him out of it. Uh, and what, and what, and what these people do is they take away all your headaches. Uh, they have their fees in there, but it's no cost to city. TML will pick up the costs of the, of the firm. And they make it a lot easier for us. They're experts in the industry. Uh, they come off a state bidding list, uh, for vendors, for roof repair. Um, they'll come out and they'll, they'll review the project, they'll schedule the work, they'll inspect the project, they'll do the final walkthrough and completion. Uh, and we're involved all through the process. There's no, it, it's in there that we're involved. We're not going to just turn over our project for our buildings to someone. But we have, uh, we'll have weekly meetings or, you know, quarterly meetings or whatever it is, uh, that will be informed all time. Uh, I very rarely turn down anything that's free. Uh, so it's recommended that we approve the contract with four T, uh, to manage our insurance claims regarding damage to buildings by the maintenance of the hailstorm.
They're gonna manage it? They're, they're gonna pick out, are they gonna pick out contractors as well?
They will actually, we will, they'll interview and bid out the, the project to several contractors on the state bid list. You'll always have the authority to prove, you're gonna approve the authorization of the work and the amount of money it costs. It, they're not just gonna go out there and, and start having people come. As I understand it, once they select a qualified vendor at a price they think is the most reasonable, uh, not low bid, but, uh, quality work, and then they'll come to the city council and they'll present, um, the recommendation to award a contract to X company for the amount of thirty thousand dollars.
Understood, okay. Um, so they're making a recommendation for a particular contractor? And then, um, do they accept liability of the work?
Yes, they, they do have insurance.
No, do they accept liability of bad construction?
I think they do. I think it's stated in there, they have liability insurance.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, I, I know they, they have liability insurance, just by virtue of them running their own company, they got liability.
I, I think they would go through a subrogation, uh, against the contractor's insurance firm to get our money. Although I, I've only recently taken up insurance, I've become quite familiar with it.
It's hard for me to believe that anything is free, that they're making money somewhere. So where, where are they making the money?
Uh, I think they'll have a contract management fee they'll get from, uh, TML.
So TML's a construction company that's gonna do the roofing?
TML is the insurance company that's underwriting these people to come out and manage our project.
I understood, okay.
I think everyone's entitled to make profit, uh, and they, they do, but it's all paid by TML.
Which is hired by the insurance company?
TML, there are, there are insured for the city. They, they, they insure us against, there's no missions, any kind of property, physical damage, both buildings and vehicular. Um, they, they will, uh, they have an agreement with four key to provide these services. It's very clearly, I, I asked these people, this, this question, is who these people working?
Right, that's, that's my question.
And they said that TML pays them and makes sure they, they, they're, do, do what they're supposed to do, but we're involved in the process. There's nothing to prevent David Rogers from going up with the four key people and going looking to roof.
Okay, so TML IRP is Texas Municipal League, what's the rest of?
Intergovernmental Risk Pool.
Intergovernment?
Risk Pool.
Risk Pool.
All they do is contract with local government.
Okay, they provide our end.
Yes, they do.
They're our end. We have a health damage, we call these people up.
Yes, they do.
And follow up.
Taylor, Taylor came out, which is their adjuster for this area, and, and did inspection of every city building and recommended.
Alright. With this agreement, are you, are we locked into using them exclusively? Or could, you know, by?
Well, um.
Thank you very much. We'll, uh, handle this one ourselves.
You could do that. You could do that. And, um, the only, the only advantage of this, they're experts in the industry, it's a lot of staff here would be free to do other things.
No, I, I understand that. I guess, am I, are we giving away any of our, uh, uh, municipal power?
No, no. Throughout the contract, the city has approval authority, city can review the work.
And terminate anytime we want?
There is termination clause in there.
And terminate anytime we want?
I, 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 you can, I don't know if you want to terminate them mid-project, but yeah, if they're not performing enough, we can contact TML, they can, things certainly in that contract for, for, uh, we have the power. Ultimately, ultimately, the city has the power to do anything it wants. Cause they don't want those, that company in here, they don't have to have.
Well, with, uh, yeah, there might be a termination clause. Anyone? I'm asking that because the council has asked about termination of at-will on other i- aspects that we.
I, I, I don't have it in front of me. I thought so. Was it thirty days? Could you scroll through that, Stephen, for me? Where's the agreement? No, I'm looking for the four key thing. This is just the, there we go, here we go. Up. Uh, all the insurance, there's the mission. Can you scroll down more, please? No. Down a little bit more. Uh, owner risk. One more. One more. No, back. Last paragraph, second last paragraph. City may terminate four key partnership assistance anytime it may so choose. Yes, there is a termination. I thought they were.
Very good, thank you. That takes care of all my questions, counsel.
This is the first time that TML has done this. We've had to use it.
With four T partnership, thank you, to provide all necessary consulting services required to repair, replace, and or restore city of hazard structures and buildings as outlined in the TML IRP, statement of loss and loss estimate prepared by TML IRP.
Motion is made to approve, uh, agenda item number eight E. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There is a second. Any further discussion? Alright, call for the vote. All in favor? Alright, there's five. For the motion, or for the, uh, item, it passes. Thank you, counsel. Item nine, discussion item nine A, discuss roles and responsibilities of elected and appointed officials in a type A general law municipality. And as I understand, Caliban, you're gonna present this?
This mic still on, everybody? Can you hear me? Okay, great, thanked. Mayor and counsel, council member Rob, uh, asked for this item placed on the agenda for discussion. And I included in your packet some resource material on this topic that for you all to review and go through if you wanted to do so. I would point out, there was a lengthy TML Texas Municipal League handbook that I, I would have liked to shorten up, but TML past used to provide one handbook type A general law studies, one handbook home rule city, twenty nineteen, find one handbook that addressed both. So sure you noticed if you looked at, you went through index, you pull out the reference section, apply to general law. Hopefully didn't do anything thoroughly on home rule. Speaking with council member Rob, I know there were a couple of areas particular interest or concern that he wanted me to try and address, so if it pleases the council, I'll try to go through those briefly, briefly as I can, um, and then try to field whatever questions or input or information from the mayor and council would like. Also, let me ask.
Please go ahead.
Okay, well, it's actually better in here too. I mean, hopefully that, hopefully this, hopefully this is working at home as well. So, um, do I need, do you want me to re-cover that material? Or the benefit of, briefly, this item was requested by council member Rob for a discussion. Um, I presented in your packet some backup material, uh, for your information on the topic, some resource material and, uh, some of the items, um, and statutes and references that are pertinent to this topic. Uh, council member Rob went over a few areas of concern and question, questions that I want to address, uh, and then my thought was to try and field any questions that the mayor or the council might have in response to that. I was gonna. Um, I was gonna ask you all, I know the mayor, uh, handed out to everybody the Texas Local Government Code. And do you all have those with you tonight? Okay, so I I made copies of specific sections that I would, could pass out. If you didn't, if you have those, then you can, when I talk about a specific section, we can turn to it in your book and you can be looking at the same thing there. If any of you didn't, all of you said you had it, right, with you tonight? Okay. Um, so, one issue, the primary issue seemed to be the form of government that Haslett currently operates under and what the roles of the mayor, council, and city administrator are under the current ordinances that the council has established. So, I can, I remember a council member asking or stating a couple of meetings ago that they they thought the city operated under a strong mayor form of government. And I remember commenting at the point, at that point, that that's, um, not correct. So, let's delve into that issue as a, as a starting point. Um, Haslett is a type A general law municipality. And so the rules for governance are set forth in chapter twenty-two of the Local Government Code. Um, you all have a copy of that. Um, those, that's the general authority for the operations of this city. The manner by which that authority is delegated between, for the administration of the city lies within the sound discretion of the city council. The council is the city's legislators, legislators and policymakers, um, providing the leadership and direction for the city. So, that came out of the T M L handbook on page twenty-two. The mayor has referenced section twenty-two point oh four two, um, as providing that the mayor is the chief executive officer of the city. And that is correct. And so, what I would start off with is ask you to turn to that section, twenty-two point oh four two. And let's review that a bit. Let's give you a second to get there, but this is the only section that references the powers and duties of a mayor in a type A general law city. This section does state the mayor's the chief executive officer in subsection A. Continuing on in subsection A, the third sentence critically says, "The mayor shall perform the duties and exercise the powers prescribed by the governing body of the municipality." So, this section sets out the explicit powers of the mayor that are statutorily derived. Those cannot be altered or changed. They're state law. There's only four of them in this section, and we'll go through those one by one. In addition to these four powers, there's two other powers we're gonna talk about. And that is the budget officer issue, and we're gonna, and then the appointment of municipal officers with you probably are familiar with, because we've been talking about that over the last several meetings as well. Those six things are the six statutory areas of the mayor's authority. All other authority of the mayor is derived from the will of the council. The council can give the mayor all administrative authority to run the administrative functions of the city. And that is a strong mayor form of government that one of the council members mentioned. That is not what has been adopted by this city. And we're gonna go through where all, where that authority has come from, but the council has adopted multiple ordinances establishing a city administrator and the administrative duties of the city administrator. And all of that authority has been given by the council to the city administrator. So, let's look at twenty, twenty-two oh four two, these four areas of authority of the mayor. And I'm gonna start in reverse just because it's quicker and easier. So, subpart E, in the event of a riot or unlawful assembly, uh, the mayor has certain authority to order and enforce the closing of certain places of recreation or entertainment and may order the arrest of people, um, who are violating the ordinance in the mayor's, ordinances in the mayor's presence. Very limited circumstances, um, never seen it happen in my almost thirty years of practicing law, but, um, that certainly is a power of the mayor, uh, in the type A general law city. Moving back, subpart D, the mayor may administer oaths of office. Pretty clear, pretty straightforward. It's another power of the mayor. Moving back up, subpart C, the mayor shall give to the governing body any information and shall recommend to the governing body any measure relating to implementing finances, police, health, security, comfort, or good governance of the city. That, again, pretty clear, the mayor's duty and powers to give information to the council and make recommendations to the council. And that ties into the fact that the mayor does not vote in a, in a type A general law city. The power lies with the council. The mayor can recommend and was within his power to make recommendations to the council. The mayor doesn't like a particular proposal. He is free to recommend against it and try to elicit your support, but the ultimate decision is up to the council, those that vote on policy. Subpart B, the mayor shall inspect the conduct of each subordinate municipal officer and cause any negligence, carelessness, or violation of duty to be prosecuted and punished. The key words here are municipal officers. Doesn't say employees, it says municipal officers. And if you'll indulge me, you can turn to chapter or section twenty-two point oh seven one. That section lists the municipal officers of the city, being the city secretary, city engineer, city attorney, uh, and others that the council points as municipal officers, also being the city administrator. So, that's who this section applies to, first of all, not the employees of the city. Second, this section only says inspect the conduct. It doesn't say manage, supervise, or direct any of the employees or officers of the city. The officers respond to the council and answer to the council. I did find an attorney, I looked for support for this, and there's a recent Attorney General opinion, Ken Paxton, from, uh, September of twenty twenty. It's, uh, Attorney General Opinion K P dash three three four. And that Attorney General Opinion says that twenty-two point oh four two, the section we're talking about, does not address the management of municipal employees. So, subpart B does not apply to or provide any power or authority of the mayor to supervise or manage uh, municipal employees or officers. It it's to inspect the conduct of those officers and cause violations to be, um, pursued. I have a copy of that Attorney General Opinion that I can pass out to all of you, um, for further, for further review. So, there are very few mayoral powers prescribed by state law. In the section we just went through, the chapter one oh two provides that in a type A general law city, the mayor is the budget officer of the city. And, uh, section oh seven, um, oh seven one, twenty-two oh seven one, that provides if there's a vacancy in a municipal, misquote that, vacancy in a municipal office, that the mayor, um, makes the appointment uh, subject to the confirmation, um, by the council of a municipal officer, if that office is vacant. So again, those are the six areas that there are statutory authority for. Again, don't get me, I am not, I was asked to provide information to you all on what the law is, and that's what I'm doing. The council decides all of this. The council decides whether the mayor should have any additional powers and authorities, which the council is certainly free to prescribe to the mayor. Uh, but what I was asked to do is cover what's in place, um, and what rules the council has currently, has currently put in place. So, in that regard, um, Haslett has established the city administrator position um, by the adoption of an ordinance in twenty twelve, which is set forth in article one point oh three in your city codebook. And I provided that in your backup material that created the city administrator position and approved a job description attached to that ordinance. Um, I don't know if you've been through that, if you, if we need to go through each and every one of those job descriptions or not, but they are all administrative duties and functions of running the city that, uh, the council has, uh, placed in the hands of the city administrator. Particularly overseeing the day-to-day operations of the city, developing long-range plans, direct, supervise, and coordinate the activities of all employees, departments, and offices of the city, and administers the affairs of the city to ensure that all city business is accomplished economically, directs all personnel matters and enforcement of the personnel policies, rules, and procedures, coordinate the work of consultants hired by the city, oversees procurement of commodities and services, prepares agendas in coordination with the mayor, and carries out council directives, and assists the mayor in preparation of the annual budget to the council. Again, that doesn't take away the fact that the mayor is the budget officer of the city. But under the rules that you've adopted, the city administrator is supposed to be involved in that process. So that was the job duties that were approved as part of the ordinance creating the, the position of city administrator. The city administrator position is different from a city manager position. City manager, uh, if, in chapter twenty-five of the Local Government Code, there's a process by which a city can hire a city manager. It requires an election of the voters to approve that. And Haslett has not gone through that process. That's why we don't have a city manager. We have a city administrator. Uh, there's many differences between the two. Chapter twenty-five specifies, uh, roles and duties and obligations of a city manager. Uh, those are different than a city administrator and in, and uh, under chapter one oh two with regard to budget officers. Uh, if you have a city manager, the city manager is the budget officer. So there's a number of differences between a city manager and a city administrator. There were arguments made historically that trying to create a city administrator position without going through the election process required under chapter twenty-five to create a city manager was, um, invalid or not proper to do, trying to skirt the rules by doing that. The legislature in twenty, two thousand and three passed an amendment to chapter twenty-five, and I'll direct you to this right now. It's section twenty-five point oh five one. Subpart B, I think, that specifically provides that in cities that have not adopted a city manager plan under chapter twenty-five, which is Haslett, are free to delegate by ordinance management duties to a city administrator. And that is in that section of Local Government Code and on page eleven of the T M L handbook. And that's exactly what Haslett has done, which is perfectly legal. Um, and in fact, what most type A general law cities of any size have done.
Sorry, Mr. Albon, can you reference that chapter again, the twenty-five what?
Twenty-five point oh five one. Yes, sir. And it's subpart twenty-five point oh five one B. So that was added to specifically address the concern of whether uh, the council in a type A general law city under chapter twenty-two had the authority to create and delegate administrative duties to a city administrator. Yes. No, it does not. You're correct. And that section goes hand in hand with um, twenty-two point oh seven one, which we were looking at earlier with regard to the list of municipal officers in the city. In a that lists the, the municipal officers and at the end, any other officer or agent authorized by the governing body.
I guess I'm just a little bit confused, Rob, on the aspect of if we are operating under subchapter C under chapter twenty-two, why is there a reference in chapter twenty-five, which means we would have to go to twenty-five with that form of government to have that city mention?
It it was, it was an attempt to clarify that the argument's being made that you can't create a city administrator under chapter twenty-two because it's an assertion of power under chapter twenty-five, that the only thing you can do is create a city manager form of government under chapter twenty-five.
And that, that's why I was confused, is why is that addressed under chapter twenty-five? If chapter twenty-five is the city manager form, it should be addressed in chapter twenty-two, that we could have a city administrator.
It is addressed in chapter twenty-two. I've been going through those sections, but the, the cross-reference is specifically under subpart B that says the, it, that it doesn't, uh, does not limit the authority of the governing body to appoint and prescribe powers and duties of a municipal officer or employee under chapter twenty-two. So they just wanted to make it clear that chapter twenty-five is not some sort of impediment to uh, proceeding with the city administrator under chapter twenty-two. I'm sorry, does that sort of answer? That, that, that's my answer to your question, I guess. I hope that helps. So, the things the council has done then in, in pursuance of this is to adopt a Personnel Policy Manual by ordinance which places the city administrator in charge of personnel management, daily oversight, direction, supervision of city employees regarding all departments and employees of the city. And that was something I, I put in section one point two of the Personnel Policy Manual in your backup material that, that states that. The rest of the Personnel Policy Manual is just specific personnel policy rules. Um, the council has also adopted a council relations policy, uh, which I included in your backup as well. On page two of that, um, it sets forth the mayor's responsibilities, the mayor pro tem's responsibilities, excuse me, and the city council's responsibilities. That section, you'll note, under the mayor's responsibilities, uh, do not include anything to do with day-to-day operations and administration of the city. Sure. This is page two of the council relations policy. At the top, mayor's responsibilities. Acts as the official head of the city for all ceremonial purposes. Chairs council meetings. Recognizes comments from citizens at public meetings. Calls for special meetings. Selects substitute for city representation when mayor cannot attend. Makes judgment calls on proclamations, special presentations, et cetera. Recommends subcommittees as appropriate for council approval. Leads the council into an effective cohesive working team. End of section.
Can you, can you put the, um, city admin-
Can, can you, can you put the uh, city administrator's responsibilities on there too?
Yeah, the city administrator responsibilities are in the job duties that were approved by ordinance and are incorporated into section 102, 103 of the city code book. This is the job duties of the city administrator, essential functions of the position. About a page and a half long, so I'll go through it.
Now, you don't have to go through it all. I'll just, I guess the, the question of city secretary. There was an issue with the mayor appointing someone or, or the mayor and the city administrator choosing someone. And then the council, council approves. Does it specifically say the city administrator chooses the city secretary? Do you know if it does or not?
Yeah, well, and yes, I know the answer to that. Um, no, the, the city secretary is a municipal officer. And so under section 07 one, no. Find the right site. The, the, if there's a vacancy in the office of a municipal officer, including the city secretary, the mayor appoints, subject to confirmation of the council. Okay. Is that, is that your question?
That is clear because I think it, this, this whole thing got brought up because of that, because of that issue.
Uh, well, I think there's a lot more to it than that. I'm not sure.
No, I understood, but I think it initiated from, from that question.
Okay.
Because it clearly states in chapter 22 that the mayor does appoint the city secretary.
No, the, the mayor, it does say the mayor appoints, subject to council confirmation.
Right.
Actually very poor legislative drafting there.
But it is clear that the mayor appoints it in the city.
Mayor appoints, subject to council confirmation. So what does that really mean? That really means the mayor recommends the council approve. Or you're going to find yourself in a stalemate forever that the mayor keeps making an appointment and the council doesn't confirm the appointment. Why I certainly would suggest that there be some involvement of the council and in those reviews and looking over those things if there's ever going to be any consensus reached on the council actually approving uh, those appointments. But nonetheless, that's up to the mayor and the council as far as how you handle that. But that is the process. The mayor appoints, subject to council confirmation.
Okay. Would you say there's a contradiction right now in this chapter 22 where there says the mayor appoints it versus what these functions of the city administrator say now?
No.
There's no contradiction?
No.
Okay.
The mayor appoints municipal officers if the office is vacant. These job duties of the city administrator all deal with the daily operation of the city and the municipal employees and personnel matters. And the daily functioning of the city, which has all been assigned to the city administrator.
And I, I want to make a comment too because I, I think I know where you're coming from on bullet point eight. It does say employee recruit, select and all those verbs. But then if you keep going, it says and all city employees to the extent permitted by law, which I think refers back to the local government code. It's to the city's administrative discretion. So I think that works well together with the way I read it.
I just want to ask one quick question. If uh, this ordinance had not been written, who would have the day-to-day? Who would have all these functions?
Whoever the council determined.
If, if, if the council hadn't determined anything at all, who would, who would be doing this overseeing of the day-to-day operations of the city's plan? Who would be doing all this if we had, did not have a city administrator?
The council would determine that, one way or another. Because if they're not statutorily due, they're not duties assigned statutorily to them. You could choose to.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just asking from, from, from other, from other cities, from anything else like that. If, if they didn't have the city administrator, they're another small city and didn't have a city administrator, who would be performing the duty?
Generally the mayor. We, as I, as I said, my firm represents 40 municipalities, over 40 municipalities. Some of those are home role cities, some of those are general law cities, type A general law cities. Most type A general law cities of any size have a city administrator form of government, which is exactly the way Hazlet set up. Small type A general law cities, one of my clients, Lake Bridgeport. They only have a city secretary. That's it on staff, part-time city secretary. The mayor is in charge of the administrative functions of the city. And that is typical in very small cities that, that the mayor is the one who runs them.
So, and that, and again, we, we weren't here when everything happened. But this is, again, we were hearing a lot of conversation, especially when we were running. You know, for councilmen.
Sure.
Of people actually wanting to elect a mayor. And that, and heard a lot of conversation that way. And again, that's where I'm just trying to find out how and why everything got completely turned from that. I was the one that brought up the strong mayor. Said, how and why did it get turned from a strong mayor? Type governor.
Well, it hasn't been a strong mayor formal government for quite some time. So.
Well, it has, it was, it was up until
2012.
2012. 2012 is when it turned.
It's when this ordinance was adopted. That's correct.
And it looked like every effort was made to alienate the mayor from any business operations at all.
Well, again, that is up to the discretion of the council.
I mean, that's what seems to, for whatever reason, uh, what motivated the council to alienate the mayor. Guess they had good reason.
Again, I am not, I am not advocating one way or another for any of this. But legally, the council can take all authority away from the mayor completely, other than those six statutory duties that are assigned by statute. The council can also give the mayor complete control and authority of the day-to-day functions of the city and the administration. Again, it lies with the discretion of the council. City administrator count. No, there's technically not a term for that. It is, it, it is what you have in place though, where you delegated authority to a city administrator. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Um, so in addition to the personnel policy and the council relations policy that we went through, um, I guess that's the, those are the, those are the rules that, um, oh, also in the council relations policy, sorry, looking at my notes, section on page six of that policy. Um, there's an additional provision that limits elected officials, direct contact, questioning or requests, basically supervision or direction of city staff and employee. Instead, those questions or, and requests are supposed to be channeled through the city administrator who would then direct uh, the employee or staff response. So again, that's um, back to the, the way things are currently set up is city administrator uh, directs and uh, charges and supervises the employees of the city. So that was my, that was on that first issue that uh, Councilman Rob asked about that, that's my synopsis, basically that the council has the authority to give the mayor those supervision and direction uh, authority over subordinate employees, but that is not what's been currently uh, set up. And those rules and policies are in effect currently been adopted legally by the city, by the council. Uh, in ordinance, most of them in ordinance format. Uh, so unless and until they are changed, those are the governing principles that should be followed. And I'll try to field any questions you have on that. I've got another area that, that Councilman Rob asked about as well, but the other area was requested was uh, uh, concern about the council agenda setting. And as I, nowhere in the local government code does it specify who sets and controls the agenda. Uh, agenda setting is a rule of council procedure relating to your meetings. And therefore the council uh, makes the determination of how the agendas are to be set. And that is in section 22.038, subpart C. The basic rule that says the council establishes its rules of procedure relating to its meetings. Again, there's no specific reference one way or another. It doesn't say the mayor sets the agenda. It doesn't say city administrator sets the agenda. Again, it's up to council. Council sets policy. Council controls all of this, basically. So what we have in place that I found, the only thing I found is in the city administrator's job description that says the city administrator prepares the agendas in coordination with the mayor. So that's the exact language out of here. So to me, that means the city administrator has the final say, although there needs to be coordination with the mayor. And if that is not the practice that's being followed, then uh, you know, that may be something that you all want to talk about or address. That can be specifically in article 1.03 of your city code book. Or you've listed the uh, procedures of the council. For instance, there's a, a rule, an ordinance that was adopted, as you all know, that says if the council member asks for an item to be placed on the agenda, neither the mayor nor the city administrator can remove it from being placed on it. Uh, and so that would be a logical place if you choose to specify how you want the agendas to be submitted and controlled. And who, who places items on the agenda, what documentation is included in the agenda. Those kind of things. Uh, and a third area that I was asked about was um, an issue that somehow has been raised, whether the city secretary uh, serves as the accountant of the city. And I would direct, I'll direct you to, if you still have your books open to 20, section 22.073, subpart E. And it does state the powers and duties of the city secretary. And says that the city secretary serves as the general accountant of the city and keeps the accounts of municipal receipts and dispersment. However, look at section 22.071, which is the section on municipal officers that we've talked about already a couple of times. Subpart C says that the governing body may, may confer on other municipal officers the powers and duties of an officer provided for by section 22.071. What that means is the council can confer on the treasurer, who is a listed municipal officer, those duties under 22.073E of the city secretary, who is also a listed municipal officer. So the treasurer can be given those duties to be the general accountant of the city and keep the municipal receipts and dispersments, which is in fact, pretty much how every city operates. Um, the council has established the finance director as the treasurer of the city in ordinance in section 1.03.003, which was also included in your backup material. So the finance director is the treasurer. And the treasurer, it's perfectly acceptable, legal for the treasurer to serve as the general accountant and keep the accounts of the city, which is our current practice. Those were the areas that I was advised about that needed to be, or wanted to be addressed. And I'll try to field other questions or information that y'all may have.
I have a question. Thank you very much for that synopsis. That was very good. So um, back at uh, 22.042, says the mayor is the chief executive officer of the municipality. Is that ever defined in this code book?
No. And I have looked and searched and researched, and there is zero authority in attorney general opinions or case law that establishes anything as far as what that means. Uh, that the attorney general opinion uh, that I cited to you earlier, uh, talked about that briefly, but it didn't come to any conclusion. Again, the TML article glosses over that and uh, it is on page 17 of the TML article. It says, the mayor is the chief executive officer of the city. The mayor presides over council meetings and is generally recognized as the ceremonial and governmental head of the city for most purposes. Most of the powers of the mayor are created through ordinances adopted by the city council. Very few mayoral powers are prescribed in state law. So there's no explanation for that, but there is no authority that that language about being chief executive officer imparts any additional authority other than the six powers that are statutorily prescribed for the mayor that we've gone through.
Uh, when you were commenting on 22.42, uh, you skipped over the second sentence, which I think is important. Uh, the mayor shall at all times actively ensure that the laws and ordinances of the municipality are properly carried out. And we haven't properly, a duly uh, instituted ordinance that established the city administrator back in 2012. And I realize, Mayor, that the last time you were mayor, we didn't have such an ordinance. Uh, but the council back in 2012 instituted uh, this uh, city administrator position and delegated, gave him powers under their authority. I think the uh, probably the main reason for this is most mayors, I think, of small towns have to work. And when a city reaches a, says, you know, they have to go earn a living somewhere else, not just being mayor. So the city needed, when they get to a certain size, needed uh, professional that was here all the time with a professional staff that was accredited, that, you know, we're doing this as on a professional capacity. And that's what I believe the council back in 2012 uh, felt that has it needed. So uh, that things have changed since you were last mayor. So now we're all aware of it and you have the responsibility to ensure that the ordinances are properly carried out.
I had a question about the, on the code of ethics and conduct on substantial interest. Cause as I was reading over this before tonight's meeting, I wish you'd go into a little more detail about that because when the, when the item came up about Hassel Park, I was like, oh no, am I doing something that's you know, not appropriate? And then, and then it does clear up a little bit toward the bottom with additional standards and disclosure of substantial interest, but I still don't, would never want to vote for something that um, I personally benefit from. So can you go over that a little bit, the substantial interest and additional standard? Please.
I may not have prepared for that. That's a little off topic from this agenda item.
If you want to come back with that, you can.
I, I have. Be very good to come back at another time.
Perfect. I have your answer and we can talk, we can talk about that.
Thank you.
Sure. Sure. Council, do you have any other questions or input or anything?
I had one more about the agenda items. So in, how did we do it in the past before this, this new election? Did we send, I mean, were they sent to Diana only, was it Diana and Mr. Golden and Mr. Quinn? Or, you know, what should we do moving forward? Because it is kind of prepares agendas in coordination with the mayor is what this ordinance says. And this procedure says a member can have a minimum of one item listed. Or, you know, it says notify the mayor, city administrator, or, you know, city secretary. So what, what should we be doing moving forward with agenda items, I guess?
Well, first of all, as far as the practice that happened prior to this election, I probably would defer to Jim or somebody to, to provide that input.
Well, what's going on currently is the staff prepares the agenda and then the mayor reviews it. Uh, I think that's what that says, coordinate the agenda with the mayor. And that's what typically has been done with the former mayor. Diana would assemble all the agenda items and, and create the agenda. Then she would distribute to the mayor and his office. Uh, but currently what we do is we put all the items on there and go over them with Mayor Holsey. So if that's coordination, that's coordination.
Sure, but the, the ultimate, the buck has to stop somewhere with somebody. Who decides if something's going to go on the agenda?
Well, the buck will stop with the mayor, Mr. Albon. I'll tell you that. And I know you're opposed to that. I know you're opposed to that.
I'm not opposed to it.
You are, look at the fence if you are. But nonetheless, Jim and I have a very good relationship in, in how we get this done and, and we're putting proposed items on there. Uh, now, most, a lot of it might be staff. You had an item came on, I called you up about it and told you what we were already doing with that, and you're acceptable to that. But I don't know, there's, there hasn't been anybody else, uh, or for a council person, had any item on there and never will be removed without, you know, first I would call and, and take you about, talk to you about that.
So are, are you saying that all, all council business that should be, all city business that should come for the council has appeared on an agenda since you've been mayor?
All city business?
Yes, city business that needs to be considered by the council.
Yeah, as far as, uh, yeah, absolutely. Do you know something otherwise?
Um, I've heard rumors that you've withheld information and that there's been city business that you prefer not to talk about, so it doesn't.
Well, those are accusations I'd like to know about. I mean, what were they?
I don't know.
Well, that's, I mean, sitting here in a public meeting to make an accusation that you don't know about is.
I'm just asking, can you say that hadn't happened?
That hadn't happened? Is there, Jim, do you know of anything, what he's speaking of?
The only thing I know was the city secretary report that was omitted one week.
Well, that was just pure, I mean, you forgot it, I forgot it, we all forgot it. Uh, you speaking to anything else, council member Rob? I mean, it's a very serious business. I take it serious. Thank you. I mean, does any other council member have any, I mean, it sounded like, I mean, all this is a response to a complaint. Are you complaining, council member Rob? Okay, well, I mean, with that, we're regarding any other item is what I've been doing or haven't been doing. Um, I mean, is there a, a complaint?
I, I just, the only thing I want to say is the one item, what Mr. Quinn just brought up, the one thing that I mentioned that we had to wait a meeting for it to come back on, um, after I brought it back up again. But I did, I was curious, I wanted to hear what Mr. Albon was saying before we continue.
Well, I, I was just reacting to what the mayor was saying is that it is up to the council to determine who sets and has final say over the agenda. The mayor said, oh, it's me.
Well, the council can't necessarily review what's going to go on the agenda when they haven't got it yet.
No, but the council can charge the city administrator with the ultimate authority over the agendas if that's their prerogative, that's their pleasure.
I guess they could.
Is it not clearly stated that they work in coordination with each other, that they work together with the agenda?
What's in the job description says the city administrator prepares agendas in coordination with the mayor.
Hey, that's very clear. They work together.
To Mr. Albon, you got a problem with that?
No, I just, I.
So you're neutral to all of this?
I'm just raising the issue and telling you what, what the law is and who, and what can be provided for by the council.
Understand.
And that was my question, do I still continue to send to the three people like I did? Cause you're right, everything I've sent, the two items have been on there. So I, I continue with that format of sending it to you and Mr. Quinn. I guess I, it does say, was this or city secretary?
Yeah, if you send it to, uh, uh, actually, I would advise to go, to send it to Mr. Quinn and, uh, like you have in the past, and I would recommend that to all the council. And, uh, because the city secretary is just immediately going to put it on the shit. You know, we might need to get some further information, you know, for, or whatever the case is, or call back and discuss something with regard to that item. But we've been working very effective together with regard to.
So in the coordination, I'm just curious, I don't mean to get in between y'all two, but if you want something on the agenda, he does, and he take it off. If you have something on the agenda and you don't, you take it off. Just curious.
Well, if I want something on the agenda, it's going on, yeah, but we haven't crossed that bridge.
I, I've never, I've never been involved in my career.
Jim's not going to do that. He probably never did that to the previous mayor nor would he do it to me. It, uh, if, uh, Jim wanted something on the agenda, I mean, I have enough respect for him and that it would go on the agenda. I think I would be surprised that the mutual respect we have for each other. Do you think otherwise? What is this? Okay, very good. Well, I want that understood, please.
Well, I actually have a question that you brought up. So I know on one of the agendas, we had the fire station parking lot. And when it first came up, it was brought up as a discussion item when there were bids out that were available, from what I understand. And so it wasn't until that discussion that we had to request for the bids to come back to us as an item for all council. So what?
That was my choice to post it that way, I, I tell you, I wasn't happy with that part. I wasn't happy with who designed it, and I wasn't happy with where it was going. Other options were ever for, for the council. It was never presented as the council. And that's why I had it on there as discussion. Let's discuss it. You know, I'm not the, you know, this item that Mr. Albon wrote is that, you know, I shall, or the mayor shall find counsel with, uh, what's appropriate, what I think is good to sit. And I thought it was very appropriate. Let's discuss this parking lot and entertain, move it, redesign it, have another engineer look at this thing. Cause I might end up with something that doesn't have any rebar.
And I, I completely understand that, cause I know that topic then came up when we did discuss the fire station with the bids in front of us.
That wasn't done to. Boy, anyway, that was, I wanted to discuss parking lot or have a discussion with the council. To ask the same thought. And we see, I mean, saw no argument to me, me have those bids, you know, look at those bids in the first, have them follow me. That's your prerogative, that's your, that's your ability, that's your job.
Okay, and that, at least from my standpoint, that, that seemed like the most transparent way to do it is if the bids were there, we had already sent, done a request for bids, then it made the most sense, especially with so many new people on council and you as well. We have all the information in front of us that is out there for, that's the least.
I don't know anything that we weren't trying to beat that. Trying to address one topic at a time. Anyway, very good.
So, Mayor, I'd just like to understand if, so now that all the dues, duties and responsibilities, roles and responsibilities have been laid out here and we've gone over. You know, and it's your duty under the local government code to, uh, ensure that those are carried out, including the city administrator doing the day-to-day business of the city. Are you in agreement that you will do that?
Have I prevented you doing day-to-day business? Has there been any complaints? Is there a complaint, Mayor?
Well, I, no, I, I've been, well, citizens wouldn't know, so.
Say it again?
I said citizens wouldn't know.
But you, you evidently know something.
Well, did you?
What do you know?
Did you, uh, take down the, uh, the economic development website?
Yeah, I did.
Give them instructions on what to be on?
I, I took, I told them to take Amazon down and put up a small business. That we, you know, Amazon has enough, uh, pre-prepped. And that small business, my attention, I think, concerning to these small businesses, they are part of the fabric of our community. And we should be promoting them.
Does that item fall under the E D Cs? Does that, that seem, I, and I don't know if Rob can answer this, but that seems like an item that the E D Cs would be responsible for the design of that website.
Um, no, no, not at all. Uh, no one's informed me of that. Uh, I mean, it, uh, yes, I did. I, I said, I'd like to take this down. I had multiple people in agreement with it.
Can, can you elaborate on that? I mean, you said that you have multiple people in agreement, but I don't, it doesn't seem like anyone on council knew about it. I just thought that was interesting.
Do I need, do we need, the staff need council approval to update and change the website?
I mean, they have in the past. And I had a question about the last bullet of Kane's input from department heads and keep the council informed of financial. So Mr. Quinn's been, or he has all the department head input for the budget we're doing next week?
Well, he, uh, is, I've been working directly with.
Okay, so the department heads have not sent him input?
They may or may not.
Have they sent you input?
Most of the budget aspects went through the mayor and finance director.
So I'm, I'm working out of the local government code. What's the local government code say again, Mr. Albon?
It says you may request information from municipal officers you need for the budget.
Is, is it request?
No, it is required.
Oh, read it again.
In preparing the budget, the budget officer, the mayor, may require any municipal officer or board to furnish information necessary for the budget officer to properly prepare the budget.
I mean, has there been a complaint being followed by state statute? No from anybody.
I was looking at the board, if the budget, oh my God, if the budget was being, I mean, the, the budget is, I've been all about the money tonight. So I know next week is going to be, it's going to be fun, you're going to, it, it, it is important. And it says it's just the mayor in preparation of the annual budget and obtains, the administrator obtains input from department heads and keeps the council informed of the financial condition and recommends action. So that's just in the past, I've done the budget workshop. Is they've gone to Mr. Quinn, Mr. Quinn's come to us with their wish list, and then we make the decisions. And that's why I was a little tonight with the amendment, I like it all be in order, but that's why, that's why I was wondering.
Understand you got to that procedure right there, but I'm following, we may have an ordinance on it prescribed, they definitely did it. I'm following state law, but, uh, but like, and, uh, and I have fulfilling my duty to state law, number one. Now, uh, uh.
But state law two-two point zero four two says all times actively ensure the laws and ordinances are properly carried out. Does that, that is state law, correct?
Well, if your ordinance tries to usurp state law, then that ordinance is not.
But it doesn't usurp state law. I just read the state law to the mayor and the council, and it allows the mayor to require any municipal officer to furnish information necessary for the budget preparation. It doesn't address supervision, direction of this, of the municipal officer or the subordinate employees of the city. That all under our ordinances and rules is supposed to channel through the city administrator.
Being levied. Yeah, well, it sounds like, um, there, this is a complaint motivated review. Like, Mayor Holsey, you better get in your place. That is, Councilmember Rob?
Simply ask you, and you said yes, if you would enforce the ordinances as directed in state law.
I'll enforce all legal ordinances.
So you're, are you saying this ordinance that we have in place is not legal?
All legal ordinances.
So is this one legal, in your opinion?
I'd have to read it.
Well, that would, I recommend you read it.
I'd have to read it. I'm not going to violate a legal ordinance.
Wait, so you're saying you have to read the ordinance that was part of our preparation for the agenda items tonight?
I'm sorry.
So you were saying that you still need to read the ordinance that was part of our preparation for the agenda tonight?
What ordinance?
The, um, the zero. The zero one two dash two zero one two? I'm assuming that's what Councilmember Rob is asking.
And that is defining administrator job? Yeah, yeah, I'll need to review it.
But did you, did, did you review it?
Since that came completely around again to sort of my question, I had at the very beginning of this.
Yes.
And that's where I brought it up here a couple of weeks. It seems like we have sort of a quasi impugn, because if I read twenty-five oh two nine, again, I completely agree with you that the city council is the one that is going to give these duties, whether it be to the city administrator or to the city manager. Cause that's where it says, um, twenty-five oh two nine is to give these duties to the city manager. And it seems to me, and that's why I said, I don't know what happened, I don't know what happened back in twenty twelve. I can see your point, Councilmember Rob, that it grows, the city grows, the mayor needs more help. But it almost seems like we, you know, by ordinance, you're going to be giving it to the city manager. By ordinance, you gave it to the administrator. In one case, twenty-five, I would have to have the will of our public servants to vote for it. And twenty-two, that surpassed that.
Yes, that authority lies with you as a councilman. You were duly elected as a council member to set policy and make these decisions.
But that's a, you know, if the city manager, a lot of those duties are the running of the business. Nothing against anything, the running the business, the city manager. But to go to that way, I'd have to have an election and have the people vote for it.
Right, and we're not talking about city manager. We don't have a city manager on city manager form.
It says in twenty-five oh two nine, you'd have to prescribe those duties like you just did here by ordinance.
No, the only reference I made to chapter twenty-five.
It says, will faithfully perform the duties of manager and must begin an amount prescribed by ordinance.
What are you referencing?
Twenty-five oh two nine, subpar paragraph C. So both places had to be prescribed by ordinance.
We're, we're not dealing with chapter twenty-five at all. It, it doesn't even apply. The only reference to chapter twenty-five I made was the legislation adding the provision that says we can still do all this under chapter twenty-two. And it doesn't mean that we're doing a city manager form of government. Twenty-five, twenty-five is inapplicable to this situation.
Both places. Both places just prescribe duty by-
Yeah.
What, what, if we went to the twenty-five, prescribe duty by and what?
Yeah.
So, if we did get the vote and we went to twenty-five, we would have to prescribe the same. All you'd be doing on that ordinance, oh-one-two-two-twelve, is changing from amending job description duties to administrator-
Sorry, I wa- I wasn't-
To amending jobs to the duties of a city manager.
I wasn't following. Yes, I mean, if we, if, if we went to city manager-
The whole thing, that's all you would be saying.
Yeah, if we went to city manager-
And so, it almost feels like we usurp that twenty-five with this council by using twenty.
That's perfectly legal.
And something-
It's perfectly legal and acceptable. The legislature has specifically said that all that can be done. And that the administrative duties can be assigned to the city administrator. And to answer your question you started off with, that you were saying we, we have some sort of hybrid system. The things I went through in great detail with you, there's, there's no hybrid about it. It, it's been delegated to the city administrator.
I can see how, I can see how, I can see how it allows it, and I'm just, I see how it allows it. I can see that the council has the authority to do it. It just seems like that there's something very closely there. We took away everything and almost went to twenty-five with being a- Just that's all. And I'm, I'll say too, again, the reason I'm bringing this whole thing up is the aspect of what we heard when we were running for council, is a lot of things, is they were hearing from the people, saying, "We elect the mayor to go run this city." And what's that? Now we have a mayor that's more of a, like, he's the, does ceremony.
That is the system that we have in place. That is the system the mayor was elected into. And that can be changed by the council if the council was so inclined. It's entirely up to the council. And less than until that's changed, what we went through tonight are the rules that are in play.
And I completely understand, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything else from Mr. Alabon?
Thank you, Council.
Thank you very much, Rob. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Alabon. Well, I got something I would like to say, and I patiently listened. And so, I would like to make comment. One with regard to, I think it's the strategic plan. It just tries to describe our form of government. And it says that, uh, we have a, I mean, it's correct, it's type A, but it says that the mayor, uh, we have a six-member council. We don't have a six-member council. We have a, uh, a, now, there's the difference between governing body and the governing body is made up of the mayor and five aldermen. And those five aldermen are referred to you as council members. I'm not part of that council. And so, that and the strategic plan needs to be corrected. That's also cited in a couple of the EDC websites. Uh, we need to correct those. But I do want to go on to this. Um, the powers and duties. This is section twenty-two-point-zero-four-two. Uh, powers and duties of the mayor. It does start out, mayor is chief executive officer of the municipality. And I've often wondered why it says that, you know, like, Rob is correct. The, it doesn't state that. And I got to thinking about that, and the reason is, is that our city is a corporation. When our, the residents in nineteen-sixty-one had to petition Tarrant County judge to incorporate. Starts out as a corporation, a nonprofit corporation, specifically called a municipal corporation. And it gets elected, and that, in that, we have to accept the bylaws put forth, and that's by the state legislature, and it's called a local government code for type A local government. That's our bylaws that we operate this corporation from. Anyway, so here it is, is, uh, corporations gotta have a chief executive officer. It does specify other officers such as five aldermen that act as similar in any other corporation as a board of directors. Then you gotta have a treasurer. Uh, statutes cover, uh, corporations, both profit and nonprofit, and that they are, uh, they specify officers, but we have, I think, five or six additional officers specified in our municipal corporation. This, uh, city secretary, treasurer, uh, tax assessor, collector, we use Tarrant County for that, a city engineer, as well as the, uh, uh, a, uh, marshal. And I might have been one I left out, but I want to say this. I kept dwelling on why they call a chief executive officer, and it's not defined in local government codes. So, I went to the state statutes, cause there's other areas to look. And I looked under corporations, mainly because it covers both profit and nonprofit and special corporation. And I looked there, and there's no definition of chief executive officer. I looked all through, probably, I can most confidently say, there's no definition of chief executive officer in the state statutes. And Rob's already stated, there's no case law, there's no nothing that he can find. And we have not coordinated on this search. So, I did what I've seen done in attorney general opinions, when there wasn't a clear definition, you know, readily available or acceptable. I've seen them in attorney general opinion, even referencing Webster's dictionary. But I didn't go there. I went to Black's Law. Now, Black's Law, if you're not familiar with it, is the gold standard for the lang- for law language. The gold standard. It is the most widely cited law book in the world. And they do have a definition of chief executive officer in Black's Law book. It states, "Chief executive officer, a corporation's highest-ranking administrator who manages the firm day by day and reports to the board of directors." You, city council. One, that covers, you know, the chief executive, item A, the first power cited by the statute. Uh, B, uh, the mayor is, Rob has already cited, "Shall inspect the conduct of each subordinate municipal officer and shall cause any negligence, carelessness, or other violent violation of duty to be prosecuted and punished." Uh, you know, there is not much of any way to do that than not, than, than, there's no way to do that if you're not involved. Being involved should not, involved should not be a crime. That's my job. That's why people elect a mayor. Also, "The mayor shall give to the governing body any information and shall recommend to the governing body any measure that relates to improving the finances, police, health, security, cleanliness, comfort, ornament, or good government of the municipality." Let me think, how many ways do I have? How many vehicles do I have to give you any of that information? I have one way. It's called a Haslett City Council. That's how I transfer information to Councilmember. That's how it's happened. I can't do it any other way. If there's another way, let me know, but I'd be violating some other law, sure. But this is my vehicle to fulfill, the mayor shall give to the governing body any information. Uh, ministering oaths and quelling riots, I won't address that. I do want to address something that Mr. Alabon hasn't brought up, and I'm quite surprised. He cited to you twenty-two-oh-seven-one multiple times where you can appoint the powers and duties of any other municipal officer to anybody else you shall choose. With one caveat. It's twenty-two-oh-seven-two, the rule right below it that he didn't read. It says, "The governing body may prescribe the powers and duties of a municipal officer appointed or elected to an office under this code whose duties are not specified by this code." You cannot give duties away from, such as the city secretary, to somebody else. You can't give those duties away, whether it's mayor, to somebody else. You cannot give duties away cited by, what's another one in there? A treasurer, as an example, to somebody else. It's in violation of state law. Uh, "The budget officer of the mayor of municipality serves as the budget officer for the governing body of the municipality, except as provided by subsection D, and that's if you've got a city manager." They are the budget officer, if you have a city manager. What I'm seeing is not all of this, is you can argue these points till the cows come home. And you can try to argue it to how you prefer, and that's what I have been appearing, you've been doing, Mr. Alabon. I'm not asking for a response. You're gonna sit down. They didn't ask for it. And what's your response to? Whoa, wait a minute. So, I could, I could say, I've got, um, the city, I was calling the, a caller, the city, whatever. And you're saying that, uh, cause I've got, I don't have an office called city administrator that I can give that city administrator office anything we want?
Exactly.
You're at, no, you're, you're wrong.
No, you're wrong.
It says, it says, "This code whose duties are not specified by this code." This, and Mr. Alabon, I showed you an AG opinion that argue, or it shows that you're wrong.
No, you did not. I read that AG opinion, and you're wrong. You, who's got the law degree here, Mayor? Uh, you're, you're citing to Black's Law Dictionary for a definition of, uh, chief executive officer to support your position. That section forty-two-point-zero-four-two, those four things in that section and the two other duties we talked about are the limits of your statutory authority unless the council gives you additional authority.
Well, council, I would tell you what, I would encourage you to speak, seek other legal advice.
Counsel, if my legal advice tonight was not correct, I will resign. You won't have to fire me.
Is that a promise?
Yeah. If you'll resign, if you're incorrect.
No, you made your own commitment.
Yeah, all right. It's fine. My advice is correct.
You're the expert legal opinion.
That is correct. And, you know, your law degree and reading of this, and you can read anything you want into this and, and apparently, you know, do what you want to do. So, all I can do is point out to the council-
Well, I've been following the law. You're just in dire disagreement with, and have little respect for the office of mayor.
No, that is not correct. I have little, I have little respect for somebody that's not going to follow the ordinances that the council has properly put in place.
Have you have any evidence of me not following these ordinances?
Um, you did just state that you had to review that ordinance, though.
Oh, wait a minute. Have you any evidence of me not following ordinances?
I know that there have been things kept off the agenda.
Such as?
There's been a escrow agreement presented by a developer for about three meetings now that you have not put on the agenda, that a staff report was prepared. And I don't know what the reason is, but that has not gone on the agenda. I know I had to ask the council specifically, uh, in executive session for authority to put items on the agenda to approve right-of-way acquisition for the road project, because those items were not being placed on council agendas.
That's-
And-
Because I asked, and, you know, when I asked to discuss those items with you and, uh, Mr. Chambers, cause you're both tasked to do this, and I found out that you are having to go to eminent domain to file a lawsuit to take the property, I go, wait a minute.
Which was authorized by this council.
What, what, but I said, wait a minute. I said, you know, where, who are these people? And he told me, and I go, well, wait a minute. I've known these people for almost thirty years. Let me go talk to them.
On a project that you sat in my office and told me you wanted to torpedo.
Well, yeah, I don't like that project. I'll tell you, cause it is not good for the city of Haslett.
But that is your opinion, and we as a council have to decide that as a group. That's why we're a board.
I understand that. If a business prospect comes to this city and seeks some sort of business incentive, and the mayor meets with him and doesn't like it and doesn't want it, is that gonna come on your agenda for the council to consider? That's a council decision as to whether incentives are made to business prospects.
Well, that's, that's true whether it goes to Thad Chambers or to Gary Halsey.
You don't think Thad Chambers would put that item on the agenda for the council to consider?
I, I don't know if he puts all EDC inquiry, you know, economic development, uh, inquiries on there or not. I don't know.
I would venture that you know the answer to that, as does the council.
So, uh, uh, what acquisitions, so what is about the, what's the one you brought up, an escrow agreement? We kept that off for a very specific reason, Jim. Can you help refresh my memory?
It was, it seemed like the description of the project was confusing, and the mayor decided he wanted somebody to review that.
Yes, that was it. It was confusing. And so, it's somebody out of due diligence, um, that, I mean, at least I gotta be, you know, I can read, and that ought to be able to read and understand it. So, that's why we, uh, didn't put it on there. It says, "This is confusing." There was one on there. Was that where we were talking about, uh, roads being constructed? Like, it was several weeks ago.
The escrow agreement is a developer's request to, to fund money to the city.
It is. It is that very one, because then I showed it to Mr. Quinn, and Mr. Quinn goes, "Oh, yeah, man, what are they talking about?" You know, so I had agreement here, you know, I don't know where the confusion is coming from.
Well, the, there, there has been inquiry by the developer regarding that agreement and where it's at. And I think, you know, we spoke about that, and then we read the agreement, and there's, needs to be some clarification on it. Uh, uh, and I'll, I'll talk to you tomorrow about it. I think I, I may have figured it out, but, um-
So, are you not happy with that, Mr. Alabon?
No, it's just an item that was-
I mean, you're making an accusation that's rather serious.
An item that was ready for the agenda, and in my opinion, is a council decision, whether to move forward with it or not.
So, shall I, shall I, uh, be mayor of Haslett according to Rob?
No, I think that the mayor-
Shall I, shall I call you up? You gonna give me a discount for all these phone calls to see what I should do, Rob?
It also goes back, I don't interrupt really quickly, I apologize between you two, but it also goes back to the bid, and that was your decision not to put the bids on for the fireplace, or the fire station parking lot. I don't know if it's your decision, what we are prepared and what we can read and what we can, like the recommendations. We might need some, we might not need some. We might be able to figure out, we might not be able to figure it out. I just think it needs to be streamlined, and everything should be put on the agenda for us to look at. I just think it needs to be streamlined and everything should be put on the agenda for us to look at. And the five of us.
I had, I had sincere concern about the engineering, yeah.
And you've spoke, and yet that was, and you told us what you thought, and we, I listened, and then we made a decision, and it, and it got voted three to two.
Yeah.
And I, you can have serious concerns, but we still have, we have to have them, we have to have it presented to us to make our decisions.
It wasn't anything that was hoped.
Is it being worked on right now, what's the status, I mean, that's gonna be my future agenda item, what's happening right now with, with the fire station parking lot, which will be later?
Yeah, that, that's.
I'll put it on the agenda for next time.
The uh, once you uh, have it, you know, the court gets executed, just in Jim's part.
Actually, uh, Kathleen, did we do any, I had requested what the status of that contract was, whether it had been um, signed or processed?
But you know, this is not, you know, we're not status seeing a, a project contract right now, this is a dis- a, a discussion of the powers and duties, we'll follow up.
That, whose power is it to sign the contract? And so Mr. Quinn is the one that signed the contract? The mayor signed the contract?
Oh, I signed the contract, okay.
Okay, so who is the, cause according to the ordinance, this is, I tie it back in here, coordinates the work of consultants hired by the council. So it was just something that you signed because you didn't know he was supposed to sign it, or?
No, typically the mayor will sign all contracts, and uh, but there is authority given for uh, the city administrator here in Hasslet to sign contracts.
Sign contract on behalf of the city as authorized by the purchasing policies of the city or by the city council ensures that all contracts of the city are faithfully kept and performed by all parties.
What's the point?
The point is, he didn't sign it, you signed it.
Okay.
And, so you should know the status of what's happening, not Mr. Quinn.
No, I can sign the contract and hand it over.
That's not what this says. That the city administrator signs contracts on behalf of the city. That's what this says. And I've, I mean, if we, if that's something we wanna decide to change or amend, we can, but that's not what this ordinance says.
Oh, okay. I think that uh, a lot of that in there does create uh, confusion within, with among the staff. I think it creates a large amount of confusion with the, the uh, people of Hasslet who elect for their city council people and their mayor.
But uh, how does that cause confusion? Because the city council voted on that item.
It's because, you know, uh, in two thousand twelve, for some reason, I think I know the reason, because that former mayor created some pretty egregious fact. It caused lawsuits. And the council went out of their way to remove that mayor. Isn't that right, Mr. Rob? Yes, it is. And you can follow all of this, it's all in the open record, uh, minute meetings throughout two thousand and twelve. And then here, you know, this all these uh, council procedures and the separation of the mayor from any activity regarding the running of the city and any authority at all, was, was written to remove that person. That's unfortunate. It's very unfortunate. You know, but to decide to come up and say, why would this ever done, that's why it was done. I'm not that person. Excuse me, Mr. Alabon, I have the floor. So this is unfortunate, you need, we should reassess this. The council needs to reassess what has been done for the good of the city. And the, I will say this, you know, May first, you had an like the people spoke loud. They were well aware of this form of government that you got in place. And it is not at all what they want. We have seventy percent of the voters out there that said, we wanna change. I suggest you change. And meet the will of the people. This is a democracy that we opened up in our strategic plan with, isn't it? We're the gateway to America, something like that. Uh, democracy. If I'm listening to any of these public hearings in the past, that's about the last thing, right? I would seriously consider, we all work for the citizens of Hasslet, more specifically the vote. They appoint this board of directors, call it city council, they appoint this mayor position, the chief executive officer in and out. And it's all based, are you serving them, or are we serving ourselves? I would look at that very seriously, I serve them. I serve them, and I serve the law of the state of Texas. And that's why I will continue to offer. Now, I don't know if you can fix on following state law. But I will continue to do that. I love Hasslet Texas as much as you.
So does that mean you won't follow the provisions of this?
I think you are trying to paint me in a corner. I will follow all legal ordinances, Mr. Horn, Rob. All legal orders. Very good, and I think we're showing a lot of graciousness to listen to your un- substantiated allegations, that's how it is, this is what this is. If you're gonna substantiate something and wanna uphold legitimate law, be specific. Be specific. I've not gotten a phone call once, and I'm scared, what's going on? You're not interested in community. At all. You have allegiance in one place. It's not discussed. Uh, it's quite evident by seventy percent of the voter. Anyway, uh, that concludes my remarks, it's unfortunate that we have to go here, but uh, I'm not being defiant to be defiant, I didn't know I was defiant in any of these areas. If I am, I invite you to call me up, Councilmember Rob. If you wanna be proactive and constructive. Or we can have another showing here in the public house. Either way you wanna go is fine with me. Uh, again, um, the people have spoken, we're here to serve the people. Uh, I will obey and have all uh, legal ordinances. If it is in clear, if it's in contradiction to um, state law, I have not, I mean, there's not much to decide there which way I'm going, it's state law, I promise you. It is state law. So, uh, I'll conclude that as my remarks. And that concludes item nine, I assume. Any more discussion on that? I mean, I, I get a little uh, emotional about it. Okay, all right, no more on item nine, we'll go to uh, uh, executive session, there's no need for executive session. Um, eleven, consider and take any, uh, take any action resulting from executive session, none there. Item twelve, future agenda items.
Yes, I would like an update on the fire station parking lot, please.
Fire station parking lot.
And I have a question, since we're doing budget workshops next week, will we see a proposed budget before? Will we see a proposed budget before Monday's budget workshop?
Yes, ma'am, uh, it'll come out Friday.
Okay, thank you.
I think they start at seven o'clock, don't they, we got three of them, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday?
I do, but I might be the only one that isn't working right now, so y'all, people that work decide.
Show of hands, who's available for six o'clock, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday?
This is for next week?
Yes.
I'm traveling.
Okay, let's, I just need to show hands, there's three, okay, Tuesday. Okay, let's do this again, six o'clock, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. One, two, three, four, alright. Seven o'clock, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Bear with, seven o'clock, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, who's available? One, two, three, four, okay, alright, you're just out. On Monday?
Here Monday, but I'm not.
But you can't come, but so you're out the entire.
No, I, I'm sorry, I'm Monday, but I can't.
Alright, okay. Can you come at six o'clock? Okay, alright, y'all wanna do it at six? Alright, so the agenda, all three days, six o'clock, okay?
And it's so, sorry, one question, so normally we've gotten like a physical copy of the propos- proposed budget, is this all gonna be done digitally, is that what? In, in the past, we've gotten like a physical copy of the pros- proposed budget, um, should we expect that this time, or probably just all digital?
If you would like a physical copy, we can, we can get that provided for you.
Um, I'm, I can do, digital's totally fine with me, I was just curious.
Why don't we, why don't we give everybody a physical copy? That way we can earmark it, you know, it, I like working papers better. Thank you. Alright, so future agenda items, we have fire station, parking lot, and we got the budget, we're gonna start at six, so Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, anything else?
Um, you already brought up the comparative analysis.
Yes, comparative analysis, that's gonna be on there. Alright, then is that all? What's going on?
The comparative analysis for the engineer.
Alright, item thirteen, adjournment. Is there a motion?
Move we adjourn.
Motion is made to adjourn, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Alright, one, two, three, four, five, motion passes. Thank you all.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
Eleven oh four P M.
This conference will now be re- this conference is no longer being recorded.